We would like to call the meeting to order. If everyone could have a seat, please. Can everyone have a seat, please? It is on. Can you hear? Okay, sorry about that. The first item on the agenda is call the meeting to order. And we have a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will remain standing for a moment of silent prayer, please. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is public comments. And we had a work session and there were two gentlemen that were waiting to speak. And if we can hear from, you know, everyone else first and then before people start repeating. So, public comments, please.
Hello, my name is Dennis Hughes. I work for Supreme Felons. I do night watch. This question is kind of addressed to him. I've been here since five o'clock. And all I've been here, so I've been here was like Supreme Felons, me and like us, just anything that helps the community. He said he knows the community very well. He's out here. I'm 58 years old. I have never, this is addressed to him. I have never seen him in the community. He said he knows it very well. It's very, uh, Sugarbrook operates, doesn't need night watch or security. I say we do because I'm out there. I do night watch. I don't consider myself no police officer. I doesn't address myself as an army officer. If I see an incident, I will write it down and report it to my fellow members, my bosses, and give them, let them address it the way they want to address it. For him to make a statement, he knows the neighborhood very well. I've been in Ypsilanti, I'm 58 years old, 58 years. I have never seen this man in that neighborhood. Uh, thank you.
Then here's her.
Yes, uh, good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
My name is Douglas Smith, lifelong resident of Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti Township. Just retired in 2020 as warden down at the Detroit reentry facility, Detroit detention, and served as warden of Cotton Correctional Facility in Jackson. I just wanted to say that, uh, over 28 years ago, I was a young sergeant in Adrian, Michigan. There was a horrific riot in Adrian, Michigan. So, you have to call on the guys who are looked up to as leaders in the penitentiary system because you don't want to have loss of life. Billy Cole was that man. Now, I grew up with this man also here in Ypsilanti. My grandmother and his mother were very close. We used to get our eggs from him out there off of Talley Road. Uh, and I just wanted to say that I challenged him over 28 years ago. Billy, I'm gonna challenge you to a contest. Let's see who can outdo who doing good. It's about doing good now. So, this started many, many years ago. And he served at three or four different facilities that I, all these men have been in, uh, my prisons, all of them. And I have challenged all of them to start doing good. They started in the penitentiary with mentoring young men. At one time, I had over 23 African-American men, boys really, from the south side of Ypsilanti. That's unacceptable in society. 23 at one facility, Adrian, Michigan. It's unacceptable. These men know how to approach these youth and meet them right where they're at on the ground. They know how, they, they received different trainings, uh, Thinking for Change, uh, Violence Management, that they received in the penitentiary. Once you come into the penitentiary on inception, you are assessed for your criminal genetic needs. These men were assessed and were sent to the specific training that would benefit them to become productive citizens in society upon their return. We had a rally, you know, it, it breaks my heart because, uh, I get a call, uh, this y'all won't mention names, but some of my own family members have been killed in the township. And it breaks your heart because, you know, once you get into it, their parents have grown up together. These men are needed in the community because it's going to take a village. It's going to take a village to, 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 to repair what's been wrong for too long. These underserved kids need these people to mentor and to get them to not make the same mistakes that they made. All I ask is that the board, really, don't be hasty and make a decision. Take a moment. You really need to sit down and break bread with these guys and talk to them before, before a decision is made, ma'am. That's, that's all I ask because they do a lot of good. We had over 60 people show up at Park Ridge Field on the south side of Ypsilanti, uh, and we prayed for those. We had the victims, okay, parents, many of them showed up. And we had kids that had, uh, assaulted people come. And to see them all come together and pray out there in that field, big old circle, and say that we are committed, this is our home, we are committed to making a change. And all I'm asking is that you give them a chance. Give them a chance. I, I, I did 10 years on the Detroit Police Department, too. The honorable Stan Eldridge, we grew up together. All I ask is that you give these men and women a chance before you make a decision to ban them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I do respect your request to wait. However, I have another meeting to get to and my mom is in the hospital right now. So, I'm, I'm rushing to do a bunch of things. Men Like Us, what does this place mean to our community? Well, I'm glad you asked. So, I'll tell you. This place serves as a multi-purpose venue space for families to gather after their loved ones have passed and they've had a funeral, a hosting spot for local nonprofits and even political groups, a space that has hosted town hall meetings and much, much more. But what you see is a dwelling place that has thugs there, as folks would call them, and have drafted up a plan to eliminate it. I think it's shameful that you have drawn all of these conclusions about this space without even sitting down to learn the owner's vision in detail and to help him find safe ways to execute that vision. You, you, you claim that the violence on the outside of the building is his fault. Well, I want to inform you and serve you notice for those that live in this bubble and may not know, but 48197 and 48198 is plagued with gun violence, as it has been for many years, long before men like us ever leased that space. This man has worked hard. Let me name him. Artis Lewis has worked hard to get this building together, spent so much money preparing this space, but just like some of our Caucasian siblings have done from before the days of slavery, trying to take what does not belong to them, leaving behind devastation from what they have taken. Why not wrap your arms around this black-owned business as you don't have many of them in the township? Why not utilize some of, some special funding to give this organization some sort of grant for security for one year? There are many things, there are many solutions that you could do. But for black folks and anything for us, your answer is always to snatch our fund. Your answer is to always take it away. Now, I would like to point out that the Regal Beagle has a long time caused many problems within the community and I am not telling you what I don't know. I used to live across the street from that place, has caused many problems within the community, but no one, not one of you has ever made a move to close it down. I mean, it's a real nuisance, okay? And does absolutely, I've never seen a community event there. Raise your hand if you have. Okay, I'll wait. Okay, let me, let me move on because I know I'll be waiting. They've done absolutely nothing at the Regal Beagle to pour into the community. So, what you're doing, and I know you may not know this, and there are some good, well-intentioned white folks that don't understand, but this is truly rooted and grounded in racism and you are using tactics of white supremacy to once again take from the black community. I mean, you already ran the Elks out of business. Can I get an amen for them running the Elks out of business, okay? And now you want to take another space that means a lot to our community. I'm asking you to please stop. Please stop with the tactics of racism because we are aware and we see you. Please reconsider your assault on this black-owned business and find a way to work with Artis Lewis, he's a really nice guy. If you try to sit down with him, he'll reason with you. I'm sure he wants to find a solution other than you are shutting his business down. So, so this business can grow into the vision that God gave Artis. See, what you don't know is that God gave Artis the vision for this business before he opened his doors. And if you'll be, see, again, you will, you want to sit down and make decisions for us, but you don't even want to talk to us. It makes absolute, let me, let me stick to my script. Um, I speak strongly to you because clearly you don't want the black community to flourish, especially since you did nothing for us with those opera dollars, I will say again. I know what Biden intended for those opera dollars. Why? Because I read the long, extensive list of things that could be done with those dollars. And one of those things was to pour into black-owned businesses within the community. You could have sent that money directly to black folks or anybody within the community if you wanted to. There were many things that you could have done with those opera funds, but you chose to do what you wanted to do instead of what the people, and I told them, they were so nice, they wanted to reason with y'all and they had a survey and they did all this great stuff and you still turned around and did what you wanted to do. It's, I know, I know your loved one's name is on this building, God rest his soul, but you are not the end all, be all to the needs of the people. When it comes to our needs, we know what we need. We need you to ask us what we need and then go back to your seat and execute that. So, I'm strongly, again, encouraging you all today to come up with another plan for Men Like Us that does not include eliminating this business because we need this business. This business has been, we've hosted an event there and we plan to host many other events there. It was safe, there was no gun violence, and there were many people from the community there. I'm asking you, please reconsider.
Thank you for your time. Who was up first?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Michael Mashief White and I reside in Ypsilanti Township. Ladies and gentlemen of Ypsilanti Community Board, esteemed members and fellow citizens, I stand before you today with a deep and passionate appeal to rally our collective support behind the Supreme Felons and have others address the resolutions regarding the immediate request to strike from the contract awarded to the Supreme Felons. As we gather here to discuss matters of immense importance for the growth and harmony of our community, it is paramount that we recognize the role the Supreme Felon plays in fostering mentorship, advocacy, mental health assistance, and housing connectors, not to mention social justice and nonviolent alternatives. By backing the Supreme Felons, we can actively contribute to the betterment of our community's young people and ensure that all individuals, regardless of their background, can thrive and contribute meaningfully to our community. Founded in 2022, the Supreme Felons is building a storied history of promoting social justice and advocating for the equality of returning citizens. From the challenges we have in 48197 and 48198 to the tireless efforts towards dismantling community violence, the Supreme Felons has consistently led the charge in breaking down the barriers hindered the progress of marginalized communities. By supporting the Supreme Felons, we not only align ourselves with this heritage of social change, but actively contribute to its continuation. While significant strides have been made, it is undeniable that challenges persist. Racial disparities in education, criminal justice, community violence, and heart and healthcare continue to plague our society. These issues are not just abstract concepts, but concrete realities that affect the lives of our fellow community members. By collaborating with the Supreme Felons, we can leverage their expertise, resources, and advocacy to address these inequalities head-on. Through partnership initiatives and policy advocacy, we can collectively work towards a community that values diversity and ensures equal opportunity for all. One of the cornerstones of the Supreme Felon's mission is the empowerment of our youth. By providing educational resources, mentorship, and eventually scholarships, the Supreme Felon uplifts young individuals and equips them to become leaders of tomorrow. By supporting the Supreme Felons, we can contribute to the programs that inspire, guide our youth towards a future where their potential is fully realized regardless of their racial or challenged backgrounds. In a world often divided by differences, the Supreme Felon stands as a beacon of hope. I said, in a world often divided by differences, the Supreme Felon stands as a beacon of hope, advocating for the unity, dialogue, and understanding among diverse communities. By rallying behind the Supreme Felons, we send a clear message that our community values inclusivity, rejects all forms of discrimination. By actively participating in the Supreme Felon's initiatives and events, we can foster a sense of belonging and cohesion that strengthens the bonds within our community. Let me conclude. Supporting the Supreme Felons is not just an endorsement of an organization. It is a commitment to a vision of a more just, equitable, and harmonious community. By aligning ourselves with the principles of the Supreme Felons, we can contribute to a society where every individual is afforded the same rights and opportunities irrespective of their backgrounds. Irrespective of their backgrounds. Let us seize this opportunity to stand on the right side of history, to make a tangible difference in the lives of our fellow citizens, and to demonstrate our unwavering support for justice and equality. Together with the Supreme Felons as a partner, we can build a brighter and more inclusive future for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Pete Martel. I live over in.
It has a green button on it. Just push it down and it'll come on.
Hello? Check, check. Yeah, good. Pete Martel, I'm the Deputy Director at American Friends Service Committee right here in Ypsilanti. We're on the corner of Washington and Pearl, which is an intersection where there's plenty of hostility and conflict. Throughout the day, we hear it up on the sixth floor from our office. I also know this, when I see orange t-shirts down on that street corner, there isn't hostility and conflict. There's conversation and people working things out. And that's because of the work that Billy Cole's done. I'm formerly incarcerated from here in Michigan. I spent 14 years in prison from 1994 through 2008. And I can tell you firsthand, the work that Billy did and the reputation that Billy's name carries inside the penitentiaries is that he looks out for people who can't protect themselves. He solves conflict in nonviolent ways and he has a sterling reputation for carrying that work out inside. And I was so proud that he came out here and was able to carry out that work out here. He's a blessing in this community. Now, in addition to American Friends Service Committee, after I got out of graduated law school, I've gone on and done plenty of work in education, blah, blah, blah. And in January, I received a phone call from Justice Bolden, who asked me if I wanted a job to come and clerk for her on the Michigan Supreme Court. It was one of the proudest moments of my life. And two days after, two days after I started, Justice Bernstein went to the Detroit News and talked about how disgusting it was that somebody with a record who had shot at police could serve in that position. And I resigned because it wasn't a fight I was willing to make. But if we're telling people like Billy Cole that he's not good enough to come into our communities and squash conflict, then to quote Justice Bernstein of all people, this is disgusting. I can't believe we're having this conversation. I can't believe we're trying to get people out, we're going to prevent conflict. And I came here on really, really short notice and I found out there's a 930-page like docket here for the meeting tonight. I'm going to review the resolution and if this is in fact some like personal vendetta that an attorney is carrying out against Billy and undermining the work that we're trying to do here, I will be the one who files the grievance with the Attorney Grievance Commission. Thank you for your time.
My name is Janet Lewis and I'm the mother of Artis Lewis. And there's not too much more I can say because everything that's been said is correct. I can bounce off of letting you know a little bit about my son. Now, long before Men Like Us and any other group, my son worked with me when I had Reach One Teach One over in Danbury Green. And he helped me and so did the Police Department, Kathy Wyatt, quite a few others, but I never saw anybody that's on this panel there to help do anything in that community. Now, my son, I, like Thanksgiving, I don't see anybody passing out turkeys and dinners except for Men Like Us and, and Supreme Felons. I, I see people out here doing things. To cook a dinner for 50 people and to have his support, you know, he and I, and I cooked the food, he helped me serve the food. I mean, Christmas time, I don't see anybody passing out backpacks, doing things like that, except for the food that you give out in the can that nobody really uses, they don't even want to pick that food up. And then to be able to talk to the young men out here in the street, you guys can't relate to that kind of stuff because you're not out there on the street. These young men out here on the street, young, strong, black men, I don't know if that's what you're afraid of or not, but you need to reconsider because when you take them off the street and shut their businesses down like that, anything could happen because you got a, you have a, um, a dispensary on every corner that's going to dummy everybody down. When I went up there and tried to talk to those people at the dispensary, they told me, you guys, what are you upset about? You got a liquor store on every corner. I said, we don't have a liquor store on the corner. You have a liquor store on the corner, every corner. And then you put it in a neighborhood to dummy these kids down so when they get ready to play sports, they're like, uh, stuck, you know? And that's not fair. You should give these guys a chance. Just, just give them some time. You know, they're just learning these visits. They don't have a college degree like you guys got. You know, they're trying to make it. They got to eat and feed kid, their kids, just like you have to feed your family. And you're trying to take that away from them. One of these days, you're going to need these young black men to say something to somebody that you can't talk to. Things are going to get out of control with all these dispensaries. They're going to, things are going to really get out of control and you're not going to have anybody out there that can talk to these kids like these young men that have been there. They know. They know that. And I'm just asking you guys to just reconsider. Show up at his building, show up at, and, and walk around the neighborhoods with Supreme Felons. Just show up. Let us, let people see your face. Because that's whose face that they're seeing is these young men out here on the corners working with these young men. You know, feeding people, passing out shoes, clothes. I mean, some people only have a place to stay in Ypsilanti. They ask them, can he, they live on the side of his building because they don't have anywhere to go. They have mental issues. They come in there, want to talk, want prayer, you know? I mean, are you guys offering these, any kind of these services? No, you expect the church to do it, but all churches is not doing that. You got to have people out there that's on the outside of the church doing things. So, I'm just asking you to reconsider. Let these people feed their family and help the neighborhood.
Thank you for your time.
My name is Artis Lewis. As you all know, I'm the owner and founder of Men Like Us. I come here tonight to talk to the board about Artis Lewis because my name is being blasted around like I'm shooting a gun or something. When I filled out this contract with you guys, I stated that Men Like Us will be providing a relaxing environment for men to network, perform, and help with community service and outreach and events. I said, services include toys, clothing drives, food drives, feeding the homeless, mentoring programs for growth and development, and provided special events for memberships and people of the community. Now, since everybody wants to talk about gun violence and everything terrible that's happened at Men Like Us, let's talk about some of the good because that outweighs any of the bad apples in this community that chose to come to my business and do wrong. I had a health event. Could you pass these out? Oh, everybody should be on page one right now. I had a health event that had vaccination and flu shots at my building, which was something positive, and mental health awareness panel at my building because we don't have no mental health awareness facilities for people to go to and talk about their problems, especially free in the community. Page two, I did an expungement program at my building for felons to be able to come and get felonies taken off of their record so they can be successful in life. I didn't see nobody in the community doing that, so I jumped in and steerheaded. The next page, another mental health awareness panel with, with a lot of people, Alicia Drier, Derek Jackson, all of these people were attendants at this mental health, uh, panel that we had at Men Like Us. We had a shoe drive for the homeless and pizza party. We gave away over 40 boxes of pizza and over 100 pairs of shoes to the homeless, sat with them and, and just talked with them throughout the day. How many of you guys ever just did that? Pen drop. We did a sock drive for the homeless. Again, taking care of the ones that can't take care of themselves or who fell down on hard times. It takes a heart for somebody to get up early in the morning and put this program together and go out and help somebody. Here's another one. Coat drive for the kids. We gave over a two, gave away over 200 coats to young kids within the community. We gave an Air Force One giveaway. We ain't talking about no cheap Air Force Ones. We had colorful Air Force Ones that we gave away to the kids so they can have some nice to walk around in the summertime. A line was around the corner, as you can see. Once again, we backfeeding the homeless for Thanksgiving, sat down and, and just fellowship with them on Thanksgiving. It's, it's hard around the holidays. People have lost family, lost their homes, which, which, which everybody can relate to. Holidays, if you don't have it, it's, it's sorrowful. You want some comfort. So, we chose to go to the homeless shelter and do that on a Thanksgiving. Right now, we have a school supply drive where we're giving away backpacks and materials to kids and totes for teachers. We have a skilled trades program that I developed, helping bring awareness to skilled trades to troubled youth within the community. College ain't for everybody. So, a skilled trades program could be something that's helpful and beneficial. I have somebody here right now who attended that skilled trades program and is working right now. Where you at, brother? That brother right there. Teaching young men how to tie a tie. A lot of young men don't know how to tie a tie to be dressed for success. Who's stepping up to do that? Men Like Us. I sat with the corner health department, helped them work on their father-son program. Why? Because I'm a father of six kids and I know how it's hard to be a single father when all of the oppression is against you. What they do, they charge you with a whole bunch of child support, then take half your check, and now you can't even help take care of your kids because you ain't got no money. So, I'm helping young men, counsel, to get through that. What else we got here? Washington County Juvenile Department reached out to me to offer children to come through my program that's on probation for me to mentor, to be able to help them get life skills, to be able to coach them on when they're doing wrong. A positive black male to look up to in the community. My building is open to people who host graduations, open houses. I have a list right now of people that coming to do an open house and I can't even allow them to come in my building to have the event because I'm closed now. I'm closed because of the acts of people that's in this community that's out of my control. Where's the protection for the business owners? Hear me is again, working with Stop the Violence in the community. A young man, two young men just got killed in the community. Along with my organization, we went to the neighborhoods to console and just be out there. with the people in the community to show support because that's what we do. It's a long list. Here's another Stop the Violence rally that we went to, to talk about gun violence in the community because that's a top priority for me. I don't want to see young men dying on the street every day. I'm out there trying to talk to them to give them another solution. I'm letting them know that you are special, you are God's chosen people out here, and we're not supposed to be treating each other like that. It's times where I have prayed in the midst of a fight in my, in my, in my parking lot. I ain't write that in the report. I have offered special events for people to come and display their talents with karaoke night that's hosted by Coco and Foolish, proud names that's in the entertainment industry, to be able to come in and talk to people. Maybe somebody might want to get off into the industry, they have somebody hands-on that they can talk to. Because I said I was going to do special events in my contract with the city. Special events include Blessing of the Bikes. I have a Blessing of the Bikes every three years where people travel all the way from Kentucky to Chicago on a motorcycle to gather for prayer. We had over 300 people in our parking lot outside for prayer. To me, prayer changes things. But I get a report that there's people all over the grass hanging out everywhere. Crowd full. And the last few pages is just some of the alcalays that people have given me for my work within the community. So I say to the board, please, until this court thing is over with, because you guys are taking me to court to shut me down, can I, can you allow me to just open during day hours to be able to conduct my business? Because now, all the people that have their events scheduled, I have to cancel. So I'm asking if I am allowed to be able to stay open during this process at a reasonable time? We can sit down after this and work out a time that's reasonable for you, but to shut me down to where I don't make anything will hinder my home, my stability, my family, my staff? Please take that into consideration because I have not misled you guys in any kind of way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Denise Week. This is my son Guy Boyd. We've been residents of Ypsilanti Township for about 15 years. In 2021, my son was shot in the head by a ghost gun. And at the beginning of this year, we started an initiative called LIFE and we are out there to bring gun violence awareness, education, and youth empowerment to the community. And by doing this, we're here to speak on behalf of Supreme Felons because they have the same initiative that we do. And, thank you. And each moment of each day, Guy goes through and has to live with his injuries mentally and physically. The gun, the bullet went through his eye, he has an artificial eye, still has every, you know, the bullets and everything in his head. And we just want to get the word out and we feel that Supreme Felons can help fight the gun violence. They are trying to turn their experience and into a learning experience and help teach the community to not do what they've done, in front of a gun and behind a gun. And I'm sure all of you know that there's an epidemic in our country and unfortunately Washtenaw County is part of that epidemic. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but according to Everytown for Gun Safety in Michigan, 81% of homicides involve a gun. That's 81% involve a gun. And it would be better for the two of us, I mean, would it be better for the two of us to intrude upon a community that is in despair? To go, us two to go in, or would it be better if we went in with Supreme Felons as a team? Because we can't do it by ourselves. And they're here to help. So if you close down Supreme Felons, that means who else are we going to have to do it? I mean, we want to make a difference in the community and we just don't know how we can do it. And we just need to put our differences aside, no matter what those differences are. It could be the color of our skin, it could be the differences of personalities, it could be someone did something to someone else. We need to put that aside and think about other people because a lot of these, these victims are our children and we need to protect our children because they are our future. And if we're not there for them, they're not going to be there for what future there may be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Oscar Ford and I grew up in Ypsilanti. I'm 65 years old. I grew up on the south side of Ypsilanti.
Is the microphone not working?
I ended up growing up in Willerun. I graduated from Willerun in 1975. One thing about Ypsilanti, Ann Arbor, Belleville, there's always been a great, great rivalry. Okay, you've got Ypsilanti don't like Willerun, Willerun don't like Ann Arbor. You get any of those two or three people, two or three groups together, I don't need it. Did I hear me? All right. You get any of those two or three groups together and what you have is you have war. Okay, now, that's been made worse by the proliferation of guns as a result of Michigan's open carry laws. Now, what you've got is you've got a few places, a very few places in this area, Washtenaw County, that a black person can go and have a nice time and have a drink and have a party or whatever, have a, have a open house. But Men Like Us is that one of those one places because of the fact, and Supreme Felons, Men Like Us, we're men, men first and foremost. We're not somebody who just come in on the weekend to Ypsilanti. We grew up in Ypsilanti, okay? Ypsilanti, as I see it, is a very lost community. It's a very lost community.
Yes.
The kids are lost, okay? Now, let me ask you something, since you guys, and I see you guys with Puff and Plantilly Winks when people was talking and different things. Let me ask you something. If you get lost, would you rather have somebody who's been there to lead you or somebody who'll know where the hell they going? It's what you have. It's somebody who been there. You got dope things running around here cracking people in the head. I've been there. I was 30 years, I'm 30 years clean from crack cocaine. I paid taxes, I'm 100% disabled, I turned myself around, okay? 87 is when I quit. If somebody wants to know how to get off crack cocaine, I can tell them. Why? Because I've been there. But there's another thing about that thing. Okay, you walk down the street in Ypsilanti, you see a bunch of little jokers over there with their pants hanging down and they dreads looking like a crazy man, you gonna go to the other side of the street. You understand? I'm not. Billy Cole ain't. You know why? Because they have respect. You talking about a generation that has respect for nothing, no one. But you know who they do have respect for? Men. Real men. They don't respect their mamas, they don't respect their daddies, they don't respect their granddaddies, and you know what I'm talking about because some of y'all got something in your family. But I tell you what, they respect a man who might do something to them. I can't say it no other way. And I'm not saying that they would do something because we all reform, but what I'm saying is this, there is no punks in Men Like Us and there's no punks in Supreme Felons. You're looking for men, I mean, you look for some, you know, not there. We're men and that's what is missing from the black community. We need strong, black men. A white man can't tell you how to do it. A white woman can't tell you how to do it. And can't nobody tell you how to be a man but a man, a black man, a strong black man. And I, I, I joined Artist in a short time, just a short time ago. I joined because of the fact, I seen the way he move and I tease him, I call him Artist, Artist X, okay, or Malcolm Lewis, because he reminds me, he just has a book from God, he has a mission that's given to him from God and it's all rooted in God. He gets on his knees and praying like never before. Whenever he, like I said another day, I say, dog, look, you gonna have to stay prayed up like never before because the bottom line is this, no weapon armed against you, share a cross, baby. Thank you. It's a drug, it's a drug, it's a pain, man. I, we said it was a long list, a long list of the guns. How, when was Men Like Us founded? Do anybody know when Men Like Us was founded?
2021.
2021. That's a hell of a long list in two years, don't you think? Two years, we ain't finished yet. And I tell you what, you can try to stop this, but you can't because we're rolling over you, baby. I'm telling you, we gonna do good with or without you. We're not, I grew up here, I know how this place is, I know the negative, but I'm here to support him in any, in every way I can because of the fact he is about doing good. He ain't about, now, look here, you got people acting fool, but even, let's go deal with the violence in the club. I'm 65 years old. The bulk of our people in the company is 25, 26, 27, in their 30s, right? Crazy as hell. I'm not going to tell you no lie, we tired of half of them, but they come in there, we search them, we magnetize them, we got security. You got 65-year-old babysitting meat sitting over there. If they sitting over there, girl, look at somebody hot, I'm over there, baby, you all right? Hey, dog, you all right? But it's better than that because I know their daddy. I don't have to call the police. I call your daddy and your mama and tell them on your ass. You understand what I'm saying? But you can't do that because you don't know, you're not from here. Can't nobody fix this problem, that's Ypsilanti problem, but Ypsilanti people and we out there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Roderick Casey, Ypsilanti Township Democratic Delegate and also candidate for Ypsilanti Township trustee. I'd just like to say, first of all, I'd like to thank Men's in Action, I'd like to thank all the other organizations, especially ReRock. Could you please stand, ReRock? Members of ReRock, please stand. Please stand, ReRock. Members of the Black Caucus, please stand. Members of Ypsilanti Democratic, please stand. Also, members of the Democratic Party, please stand. See, the reason I ask this, sir, is because I want to let this young man know that 20 years ago, we are the founders and the leaders in social justice. We are the one that started the expungement. We are the one that brought your children's suffering to light. See, because I had a son too, older son, and just like many of y'all's sons, he get into mischief, but that's a part of life, it's learning. You can't learn unless you go out there and get into things. Hopefully, it be good things, but he made choices to get into marijuana and all the other stuff. And I talked to him, but he didn't listen, just like a teenager. And he ended up getting some felonies. And when he got grown and old, he made babies and got married and he wanted to get a job and get a house and all that stuff. But guess what? He couldn't get one because of his record. And you know what he did? He went out and hung himself. All right? This is our system that has affected our people. See, you don't woke up a hornet's nest. Look here, I ain't never seen any other peoples in here, people of color. So you don't woke up a hornet's nest, not only for this here, but for the pandemic money. See, that's supposed to went to the African-American community, the ones that suffer from COVID the most and die, from the elderly who suffered and died, from the poor who suffered and died. But instead, you put it on a parking lot and on a pond. I was very disappointed. I always admired you guys. Sam Eldred, you stood up, I was very proud of you. But the rest of you just fell in line. And now you want to attack this program. These are our kids we talking about. These men are doing the best they can. And young man, men's, the men's, we started the expungement, all right? Matter of fact, me, Judge Thomas, and LaGrange is the one that started the statewide expungement automatically, right here at Brown Chapel. Okay, so let you know, we making history here, we opened the door for you, baby. These people over here, these people, your elders here, we opened the door for you and we expect you to carry on, we proud of you. But at the meantime, don't come just for this meeting. We need you at many more meetings because a lot of your benefits are being punched. Okay, punched. All right? That was punched on a pond in a parking lot. I mean, we already paid taxes to fix the parking lot in the, in the pond. So what happened to that money? Do anybody ask what happened to that money? Could you tell me, anybody on the board? I'm not smiling, I love you, but I'm not smiling because you don't woke up a hornet's nest. And my friend, I'm not going to mention the name, I know some things happened in the past and Mr. Cole, just like all of us, have made some bad mistakes, okay? Not one of us in here perfect, otherwise, we wouldn't be here. Mr. Cole made a bad mistake and it hurt a lot of family members and a lot of friends. But please, pray to your God to forgive this man and allow the community not to suffer because of someone's else's mistake or shortcoming, you know? Because when you put in a public position of trust, you got to move your own personality out the way. You have to move it out the way in spite of how you feel. I know this as a delegate for 20 years. I go through some hell with people, but when it comes for their right, I have to fight like hell for them, whether I like them or not. Okay? Because it's the right thing to do. And that's what I'm asking y'all to do today. Do the right thing. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Harold Wembley, Christian Love Fellowship in Ypsilanti, but I'm a resident of Ypsilanti Township. Here's the part that saddens me, why are we here? Why in the heck are we sitting here trying to take something from people who are doing the work and we being judged by people who don't do it? So, so I gotta be honest. I don't understand, I don't understand this. Everybody has a past. If we went through all of y'all records right now, you wouldn't be in office and I wouldn't be a pastor. Let me just be real about this whole thing. As a black man, why do I have to grovel and come before a bunch of people to do right in the community or do right and to live my life? Why? This makes no sense at all that we in here in a meeting talking to people about this. This is crazy. It's 2023 and we still living like back in 2,000 years ago. This is crazy. Because here's the thing, if they stop doing the work, are you going to do it? That's the question. If you're going to do the work, start now. I don't really care what color you are, do the work. But don't make, don't sit here and try to put people on this, on like a trial here to say, please, let me do this. Forget that. We pay taxes like you pay taxes and by the way, we vote your butts in. Yeah. So I will say this, and I'm pissed off right about right now, and I'm looking at your face. And the question is, do you come out? See, the bottom line is this, this is crazy. Men doing work in the community, talking to people who look like them or don't look like them, but they're doing something to people who look like them or don't look like them, but they're doing something that they can help. As a leader, Miss Thumbo, two things I've learned. Either you caused it, or you allowed it. Thank you.
Your next, sir.
Hello, I'm Ali Suffaty. I'm in the four, eight, one, nine, eight neighborhood. And I'm here as a retired educator of over forty years. Teaching is really all I know. So I'm gonna give you a lesson. It's called the window and the mirror. Okay? You know what they both do, right? A mirror is the reflection, and the window is something you look through, and in this case, to see opportunity. Supreme felons, men like us, they are both. Young black men need to see a positive reflection. White America has squashed that. They don't want that to happen. That's the situation. You look at gun violence in Washtenaw County. You, we have seen, if you look, I looked today, if you see the rise in the last, uh, two sets of five years, it's constantly upward. Where's the majority of it? Ipsilanti. The incarceration in our county jail is filled with young men from Ipsilanti. That's it. Those are facts, right? If you want to bring an end to it, if you want to be part of a solution, then you don't get rid of these people. You don't do that. That's not fair to the young people of Ipsilanti Township. That's just as easy as it can be. Remember, please remember, the mirror and the window. And when you think of that, the only thing that can come to mind, if you're real about resolving the problem, men like us, supreme felons, that's it right now. You take that away, then what you're telling those black people again, and I just heard my brother said twenty years ago, this was, there was something like this that is established twenty years ago, and nothing changed. Okay? So remember this as well. Nothing changes, then nothing changes. You will continue to fill that county jail with young people from Ipsilanti and Ipsilanti Township. You decide when you want that to end. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is George Waddles Jr. I serve as the pastor of the Second Baptist Church of Ipsilanti. Many of you know me. Some of you know me personally. Five years ago, father brought his son to me. We talked to him. We begged him to change what he was doing. Two weeks later, we buried him. He was killed in Ipsilanti Township. I wish I'd had the Supreme Felons or Men Like Us to talk to that young man. I do a lot of funerals, bury a lot of young people. But some of them are alive because of the work these men do. And I pray that you'll think twice about what you have on your docket tonight.
Thank you, Pastor.
My name's Gail Walcoff. I have had, I have an after-school program that's been around since two thousand and eleven. Um, I have to say that since the Supreme Felons and Men Like Us have moved into our community, our youth have positive role models. Our youth have somebody that they can talk to. I'm an educator. I will echo everything the other educator do, does. This is what I do. I educate. I can reach out. I can help students get their high school diplomas and go farther. They cannot get their high school diplomas if they're dead. And we have been having a lot of that. And I have to say that the Supreme Felons have never not come to my door. Doesn't matter what time I text, what time I call, Billy Cole will be there, and the other Supreme Felons will be there at any moment, and they know exactly where we're located, no questions asked. I just hope that you hear what we're saying. You hear that they are making a solid change. A solid change has to happen. It doesn't look the way it did fifty years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Josh McAllister. I live in West Willow. Uh, man, it, it kind of sucks that we all got to come here tonight and, uh, go through this, you know? But on some positive note, man, this is the first time I've been able to be around all my brothers that we, we're out here. Deshaun, Justin Harper, you know, Artis, you know, we're out here on the ground with these kids every, every day, working our butts off. That I own a, a veterans organization, or, or they own, own kid organizations, or, or whatever the part reentry, or whatever it is. It's sad that we, it takes us all to come here tonight to, to, to fight for the only, what was that, six? Six companies in the township that are black owned. I'm a father of six kids, just like Artis. You know, it's hard out here. When your, your business is getting attacked, that is, that is some older generation that doesn't understand the change. This is, this isn't, this isn't about color no more. This is about change that, that has to happen. I got kids over here right now that are battling, uh, charges. And they have to be right next to me all day long, either on tether or not. And that's Deshaun, that's, that's Justin, that's Jamal, wherever he's at. I seen him here. You know, I, I'm really, um, proud to be out there with these guys and be able to take, take these kids to, to mentor sessions at, uh, Men's Like Us. And that's daytime, and I don't know what happens. I don't want to say nothing bad about any of these, um, black men that are really out here doing some things, you know? And I just want to say thank you, you know, to every single one of y'all.
Madam Chair, Board, friends and family today, my name is Dana Harris. I'm a proud union member. And first of all, I would like to say, this is what unity and solidarity looks like right now. There's an issue. People are coming together to voice their opinions. And I, for one, stand in support of Artis Lewis and Men Like Us because I'm a proud member of Men Like Us. But also being a proud member of Men Like Us, I'm also the state director for CBTU. I got over eight hundred members in the state of Michigan. And when I first met Artis Lewis, we sat down, we had a candid conversation. He, he shared his vision. I shared mine, and I was on board from day one. So I'll piggyback off of what he stated earlier. I was in the room with him when we did the skilled trades program. My trade, master mechanic. So I was able to talk to some of the youth about the benefits of being a mechanic, because I'm sure everyone in here has automobile, needs repair. So you have to look at a lifetime skill, and that's what I shared with the audience that was there that day. Also, I partnered up with him to do the coats as well. And also through my network, we did go feed the homeless. We delivered fifty pizzas down to the shelter in Ann Arbor, along with the shoes and over five hundred socks. But also, during my partnership with him as well, we had a national convention in New Orleans this past May. And I was able to give a little recognition to Men Like Us because I was a member. And we also shipped some socks down there for the homeless in the city of New, uh, New Orleans. So Men Like Us is being recognized around the world because there's sixty chapters across the country with a hundred thousand members and one in Canada. And one of the chapters, I happen to represent, CBTU won Chapter of the Year Award, and that was thanks and collaboration with Artis Lewis and Men Like Us. So we out here doing the work. And I would say, please reconsider, because it was very disheartening because my oldest daughter, who graduated from Kennesaw University a year and a half ago, we had a baby shower planned this weekend for her. So now I have to look at another venue for an event I had planned at least four and a half months ago. So what am I supposed to do? You, you, you have to consider other things besides what you see in front of you. I heard another gentleman to my left said he had an event. How do you think Artis feels? He has to call up all these patrons that put a deposit down. I paid good money for a lot of vendors to show up. What am I supposed to do? I got people coming from Virginia, Tennessee, Texas, to a baby shower. How do I tell them at the ninth hour, I don't know what we're gonna do now? That, that's unfair to the community. That's unfair to Artis and the brother that's over here who has an event probably facing the same thing. So I, I would just ask that you reconsider, you know? Consider all the good that has, uh, came out of that organization. Supreme Felons, we were there with you in West Willow for a Stop the Violence rally as well. Very impactful. The police was there. I believe the mayor of Ipsilanti was there as well. Um, so just reconsider your actions because actions have consequences when you, when you're up for reelection again. We will remember that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniel Jackson, and I just want to share maybe just a couple comments, thoughts. Um, first and foremost, I just, um, it's awesome to see that we have a forum in which we can have, uh, a conversation and a process, uh, in which we can address various issues without violence. You know, this doesn't take place in a lot of different places around the world. The privilege we have right here to even agree to disagree on certain issues, and we can come together and hear one another, and there's a place for the community to speak out. And our city officials are taking time to listen. Just, just grateful for this forum that we have here. Um, I also just want to say that I, I know there's, in our community, sometimes there's a mentality, us versus them. And we forget that we're really just one people, we're one community. And we're here to, in a sense, be our brother's keeper. And it's not a black or a white thing. It's just the reality that we are part of this community, Ipsilanti, Washtenaw County, and how are we working with one another? How are we, you know, uh, collaborating with one another to make our community a better place? And I believe that's the intent of every person that's here. You know, you could be in all kinds of places and doing all kinds of things, but I think the general mindset is we're wanting to try to make a difference. And we may disagree on what that may look like, but I'm glad that we're in, we're having an opportunity to, to walk that out here today. And I just want to make a mention of that. The other thing I just want to say that, you know, I, I, I am, I am a minister, and I've walked with a lot of people that have gone through a lot of different types of trauma, all from abuse to, you know, uh, having their family members being killed or hurt in some type of way. And I just want to say that it's a, it's a challenging thing to learn how to forgive. It's a challenging thing. It takes a lot of courage when people have hurt you, or they've hurt your loved ones, or your friends, or your family. It's hard to let that go. You know, most of the, the violence we see in the inner city is retaliatory. Is that not true? Right? It's hard to let it go when you watch somebody murder your friends or your family and just say, okay, we gonna forgive and move on. It's a lot, it takes a lot of courage. Right? And I, and I just, you know, we have a system where people go to prison, and we're looking for justice. But at the end of the day, I just want to say that, you know, there's a place of healing that can take place. Part of it is learning how to forgive. Part of it is, is recognizing and believing in the concept of redemption and rehabilitation and becoming better people. And engage, and, you know, we believe in that. I mean, that's the whole reason why we have a forum like this, that we can make things better, that people can make better choices and move on, and that we're not haunted by our past and held in that, in, you know, in that type of way. And to see people out there making a difference, changing their ways and helping others to do the same, it should be applauded, you know? And I think, and it is. Just want to share just one more other thing along those, those lines. But I, I just want to make mention that I can only imagine, you know, the grief and the hardship of having somebody that maybe you know that has been killed. That's, that's a hard thing to forgive and to let that go. It's a hard thing to just not label all of the people that have, you know, treated you bad. You know, even here, there's people, we've been treated a certain way for some time, you know, been labeled and criminalized, sometimes just by the color of our skin, not by the character, not by our, the content of our character. And the ability to rise above that and to talk and to see how we can work together and to forgive and to move on and to heal as a community, you know, that's what, I think that's the heart of all of us, you know? And I just, I'm just grateful, I, I feel like I'm rambling, but I just feel like I don't know all of the issues of why there is a, a resolution to dismantle an organization that is doing great things for our community. I'm sure there's probably other things out there. I know that we tend to condemn what we don't understand. And this works both ways. And I know that there's people here that because of all the things you, we've been through, you've been through, that there's a lot of passion and a lot of zeal, you know? And we can fall into ourselves, standing on this side, accusing you and judging you for not doing your job correctly. But I just want to say, I don't know what it takes to be a council member or do what you do, but thank you that you're actually in the arena. And you're actually trying to make some type of thing. Maybe you are, maybe you're not. I don't know. We'll find out, right? I hope that you are, believing that you are, and that you're reasonable and rational, and you're, and you're, and you're willing, and, and you're here listening to everybody. And my only, my last sentiment to close this is just to say that I just appreciate the fact that you're taking time to listen and taking time to consider and taking time to hear other perspectives and points of view. And as we all move forward to heal as a community, as we all move forward to aspire to be better citizens and to not fight against each other and to turn our enemies into our allies and to collaborate and to make our community and our world a better place, as we, as we press past all of the hurt and the pain and the disappointment and the injustice that we've all faced on some levels. And I'm just grateful, once again, for this forum and for everybody that has shared, everybody that will share, everybody that's here doing something in the community to make a difference. It's not, that's not everybody. I'm waiting for the day where eighty percent of our community, a hundred percent of our community is actively involved. And that's what these, that's what, that's what we're going after. And so I just say that, I think I talked enough, but I don't know what I was gonna say, but I just felt like I wanted to say something. My friends here, as if I would say something, and I just, I, I have my own story, but I just respect the fact that you can come, even Billy, from all that you've come through, and, and you're trying to make a difference. You're giving your blood, sweat, and tears and putting yourself on the front lines to work with people that most of our society has demonized, marginalized, criminalized, right? It won't even take the time of day to believe that they, that these people can change, that these people can change and people can turn around and people can make things better. You know, the idea of redemption and change is real. And I just thank you for the work that you're doing. And I imagine all of you have a story in that as well. So God bless all of you.
My name is Cindy Cole, and I, um, want to set the record straight. Someone did say that Supreme Felon started in, uh, twenty twenty-two, but that's wrong. They started in twenty twenty. And they started when they didn't even have money. They were, uh, delivering food. Of course, this is when COVID started. Of course, this is when COVID started as well. And many people didn't want to go out because of COVID, but they delivered food to the seniors. They did food drives where people can come pick up food. Uh, they did, uh, passed out masks. Anybody who called them to ask them to do some of that work, they did it. Out of pocket, they did it. So my question, and also, uh, single mothers were calling, asking for help for Supreme Felon to talk to their kids or advice on the things that their kids was getting into. But it seems like it didn't become an issue until money was involved. As soon as they get this grant, it's all kinds of issues got to be brought forth. But who will talk about what they did in their own spare time in 2020 to now? That's all I want to say.
Good evening, Ypsilanti Township Board members and, uh, all those who have come to, uh, support Supreme Felons and those who did not. We'd like to, uh, say thank you for coming. I'm Ricky Jefferson. I'm a former county commissioner. I'm a former city councilman. And now you can call me Reverend because I'm back to ministering again. So the Reverend part, right? David was a murderer and an adulterer. They didn't have to forgive him, but God did. He became king. Rahab was a prostitute. She ended up becoming the great grandmother to David. Ruth was a moabite. She ended up becoming the grandmother to David who became king. I got problems that I don't want you to know about. I was out there the same years Billy Cole was out there. I didn't get caught. I don't have a felony, but for some reason, 18 precincts in Ypsilanti Township voted me to be county commissioner three times. Nobody in here knows what I've been through to find out what it's like to be an elected official in Washtenaw County. You can blame me today because when I got there, I found out about the non-inclusiveness, the non-diversity and the discrimination and the lack of willingness to give money to And I couldn't do nothing but be me. I was told not to try and deal with issues with black people. I was told that I don't get along with white people. That's a lie because I work with all y'all up there. That's what got me moved out of office, but you know what? You done, you done woke up a giant. Now, let me get off the preacher. I wrote Billy a letter a few months ago. He and his wife Cindy, who I went to school with, I went to school with Artist Lewis' mother too. They called me and said, can they put this up and frame it? I told them you can make it public, but they didn't, but I will. Just want you to be encouraged. Keep holding on and keep keeping on. It takes the hood to save the hood. You are a solid brother. I listened to what you had to say at the Washtenaw County Democratic Party panel. You are not the same man who said to me at one time, I don't speak well enough to be out front. Your words were spoken clearly and expressed the heart and passion of your work in this community. The unique way you have taken lessons out of being incarcerated, and we heard from Mr. Martell today, that environment and turned them into working relationships as well as walking in the responsibility of providing the opportunity for our kids to have hope and stability. And I spell stability, S-T-A-B-I-L-L-Y-T-Y. In our community, which was clearly not there before you came home. You have gone beyond your past mistakes into doing the work of intentionally saving lives while risking your own. Real repentance and real restoration are only evident when what you did in the past and what you're doing now are 180 degrees different. One life took by gun violence by your hands. And now many lives are being saved through the interruption of gun violence. And this is what I told him that means. I said, that means he knows the priceless value of one life. One life. If I was to go back into some of them closets that you have, them bones would fall out before I opened the door all the way. This is a personal thing against this man. You definitely don't know what you're talking about because you haven't talked to him. I talked to him. I called, I talked to him when he came home. He not doing this because he said, oh, let me do this. Mothers started calling him about their children and he said something needs to be done and he formed this group. It was the demand, not his want to be in this place. You think he want to be, uh, in the public eye and, and being, uh, talked about and scrutinized, criticized? This ain't about none of us. It's about our children. Let's talk about our children. One last thing, I gotta tell you this. One last thing. On August the 24th at 1:30 PM, men like us will be in court in front of Judge Tim Connors at 101 East Huron. Be there.
Good evening. Um, we've talked about a lot of things. I just want to add the M and M to it. Uh, my name is Rosanna Kelly and I speak as a citizen of Ypsilanti Township, lifetime citizen. I've worked here, grew up here, and I'm just asking you to hear me. We haven't talked about the money and we haven't talked about the mental health. You want to, it sounds like, I didn't read all of it, but the gist is you would like to remove a program, one, that you didn't even give a year time? This is funding that we're talking about that was given to them, was it given to them in support or was it given to them as a setup for failure? This was the same funding that the township and county did not utilize well in the past. That's why it was available. You stopped children programming and reformation and prevention because it wasn't working for you. And you reached out to individuals that you identified that was doing the job. And that was this group. Mr. Lewis stood right here and I can support men like us in saying that a lot of good stuff happens in the daytime, a whole lot. He had a whole handful of stuff. We witnessed it. I went to a wake there to a family that couldn't afford a building. I've supported organizations that have started and rooted out of that building. Seems like all the problems and the calls that are coming through the radio come through at night. So if the business, because it's not Mr. Lewis that's saying, come on y'all, let's fight these people, let's shoot. It's not him. It's not the organizations that he works with because again, I've got children in this. I got a girl and a boy, so they talk, okay? I get all the business. And not one time did they say somebody from Supreme Felons started to fight, instigated to fight, created the havoc. No. So at night, when you all are sleeping, okay? And the mental health rises because it's not being treated. And it's not, I ain't gonna pick on you. It ain't just Ypsy. It's not just the county. It's not just the state. I travel all over the country. I'm blessed and privileged to be on international platforms. It is a world crisis. But since we're talking about Ypsilanti today and we're talking about the one group that you empowered to do the work that they were already doing and the one business that is taking the courage and took the steps to create a platform to be able to help the organizations that look pretty in the daytime and have the courage to work at night? Why don't you, if you will, well, let me just do this, give me two, two seconds, everybody if you will, by raise a hand. Have you ever suffered from depression? Okay. Have you ever suffered from anxiety? Have you lost a loved one and have suffered from grief? This goes from you too, please. Any of you, depression, unborn? Nobody has grief?
No, I raised my hand.
Ain't no anxiety? None of you have a relative that has died? You don't have a, you don't have a, a kid? I got kids that come home to me and they're like, mama. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm also speaking as a mental health therapist and counselor. I worked really hard to be that person, okay? And not a textbook therapist, one that did. Get this y'all, because I owe and I'm pissed off with some other issues.
Can you go over to the microphone, please? A person doing the minutes or not here? Thank you.
I'm not just a textbook therapist. I worked in a lot of populations. I actually left Washtenaw County because I wanted to be better than I could be at home in my hometown. But the cry was really, really loud from the people that are doing the work. So I received a call from Billy Cole. I received a call from Artist Lewis. I received a call from other organizations in this room to come and work. What you see, Rosanna? And I say, it's the same thing that's happening. So whatever you do, if you get to the meeting or any meetings before I can get there, tell them to work with you. Help push the money where it needs to be. Why don't you give them extra security at night? Okay? Why don't you put, there's a program called Work on You. And it's, it's, I think it's getting ready to just take like a national catapult. And what it, what it says is, is you gotta be, you gotta work on you. So meaning before you can make a decision tonight, work on you. Think about what's wrong with you and why you have the ability or the decision to want to stop something you don't know nothing about. Okay? Right now, Billy Cole and his organization had to stop. And that's why I flew all the way here like, what the heck is going on? We were working, working with men like us. I got men and women like change, different groups and we're working to be able to work on you. And they stopped working because we gotta come because they getting ready to get shut down and funding is getting ready to stop. In my town, this needed so much. Mental health is needed. When you guys are asleep and they're in them parking lots saying, hey man, I know your brother got killed last night. I know your daddy. I was raised by him. You know, come with me, let me tell you about what happened to me. And then as soon as they come around the parking lot, the young man got a different perspective. Or the young mother whose kids got shot and she want to go and shoot up every organization that didn't help her. And they say, hey girl, come on with me, let me tell you what God can do. So please, if you hear anything, care about no titles. Sorry about my bad hair day, it was raining. Hear me when I say this, mental health is real. And you all have the power to move the monies in this township. Again, it's a world crisis. Make a change in your home. These are your children. We gonna sit next to each other on the bus in the library. When you up in Mendelson and under these different places, you're sitting next to these same people with mental health issues. Work with the people that are already on the ground, that are dealing with the people that have the issues. Allow this man to keep that platform open. At least let him keep it open during his business hours because you ain't got no violent calls in the business days. And then help him to be able to harness and, and identify what these mental health issues are at night. Is it the grief that's got these people coming out with guns? Is it because of domestic violence that you all still can't help us with? The same, you got, you have 99% of your calls of, of domestic violence happen within the wall of unfortunately, the, the West Willow area, okay? So at night, when the lights is out again, when you sleep and those mental health issues get up and they're, they're floating around, let's, let's come up with a nighttime plan, okay? I'll be quiet. Mental health and money, you got the power. All right. Work on you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, I like that response. Thank you. Um, so my name is Keith Jason. I live at 8267 Hummingbird Drive here in beautiful Ypsilanti Township. And I just want to say, um, that I was not born and raised here. On the 28th of this month, I will have been here for 24 years and I chose to make this my community. I chose to raise my family here and I love being a part of this community. In the time that I have been here, I have been a minister in the Church of God in Christ for six of those years and no longer, but do want to say that I appreciate the portion of this meeting this evening that has felt very much like a church experience. And I do want to ask, if you all could help me out and just say, read the room. Say, read the room. I showed up tonight to talk about planes falling out of the sky and to talk about the dangers that can be present in the community, to talk about how we might want to communicate with residents to let them know that these things are going on so that they can be aware of the noise and all of those things and all the dangers that are present, but I had to. And in my read of the room, I just want to say that I am so thankful to live in a community where we have people who are willing to find creative solutions, to have grassroots efforts and to find innovative ways to address issues that the systems have not yet been able to And so I just want to ask, you all know I love you, and I just want to ask that tonight as you all, that you reconsider this resolution that you're thinking about passing this evening and find a way to partner with the organizations that are working so diligently to make an impact in this community. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joy Germa and I'm not from here either. Um, I was raised and born, born and raised in Chicago. I moved here in 2004 and, um, thank you. Just gander now. But, um, so my nephew was killed in 2021. He was shot in the villas on golf shot. Okay. On Thanksgiving morning, mind you, okay? Just terrible. What can you say? It's just heartbroken. Um, so I didn't even know anything about this organization, but I, I got a call. It was a call to come out. I have a nonprofit youth organization, so. And read the room. Read the room, man. Look, I would, look, I need y'all to come talk to my son. No, I'm serious. My grandson is already in detention. They won't even give him a bond. He's 16, okay? This is serious out here. We need them. We really need them, y'all. We need them. If they can just say... If they could just say, "One, two, three, give them a chance." I'm serious about y'all. Get in with me later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please change your mind.
When he said, "Read the room," I, when I walked in, I was reading the room because y'all identify him as Billy Cole. And I identify him as Uncle Billy.
Okay. As uncle. Because when you can separate somebody from a family and make them an idol or make them what you want them to be, you forget that there's a human. And him and I began to have a conversation a few days ago. And I said, "Do they know your story or did they read your story?" Because when you know his story, you know he reformed, which our Michigan correction department's supposed to do. We question. But I'm challenged that we have to come here and say that our system is not working for the black male child. Our school system fell them in kindergarten and preschool. So by the time they meet middle school and high school, they're gone. We use a forum called Informed Trauma Care, but do we know what trauma is? So we're challenged on this dialogue that we're using. If they're doing something wrong, the law should correct them. But if they need education to do something better, we should be trying to provide them with that and not close them down. When I look at being a single mother and thought I was educated and thought I had it all together and my kids, his nephews, a generational curse, we're familiar with that. They weren't poverty, but I could not be their mother and their daddy. When he told me the story that reformed him was their father who died when I had a 13-year-old and an 18-year-old. The 13-year-old began to enter the system at 17, just returned home where I could call Uncle Billy and say, "I can't do nothing but pray as a mother," which is powerful. But I need iron to sharpen iron now. I need you to talk to him like a man because I can't do it. I can't do anything. I don't want to bury him. I don't want to hear about this. But I'm challenged when I live in Superior Township. And I can't get my grass cut, but there's no shutdown on the people that should cut the grass. I'm challenged when a whole school sits over there boarded up and we don't have a rec center in Superior Township. I'm challenged. But I will see you at my door knocking saying, "Hey, vote for me. I'll hear your voice. I'll be your voice." But I didn't see anyone come to say, "What do you know about men like us? What do you know about Supreme Felons?" We didn't get those calls. So when elections come around and things are going wrong, where's the conversation afterwards? I tell them when I buy a car, "I want you to treat me like this when you selling me the car, when I bring it in for maintenance." And I'm just saying tonight, why are we wasting energy on something that's working versus giving them the skills to make it work better? And she talked about mental health. If we know anything about mental health, the black community is hurting. COVID was just another layer, so we call it complex trauma now. Because there's another layer of trauma with COVID in the mental health. It's more cooler to smoke marijuana than to go get a psychotropic. Or if I go to get the psychotropic, do you judge me and don't know my story? Can you do informed trauma for me? So again, you guys have heard a lot and you're gonna do what you want to do. But I think you need to weigh the cost of our next generation when you make this decision. I'm not saying everything is right. I live in Superior Township. I live around the corner from men like us. But I can tell you what he said. In the daytime, I don't see the problem. So we know that something is working. How do we make it work better? Men like us, that is my kid's uncle. I can tell you they both home and working today that they're not back in the Department of Correction. Did he change a curse? Did he break a curse? Do y'all know Billy Cole's story? Or do you just know what they wrote on the paper? Who is that young Billy Cole? Who is that boy? Versus that man that you see out here doing something? Because we all have that child in us that's searching and search in different ways. But I would challenge you guys to have a conversation and meet the man and not the boy. Because the boy did a crime. A boy spent some years in prison. But the man has come forth. And let's let the man be the man and not resent him again for a boy's behavior. Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot has been said here. I wish I had my name, but I don't think it's gonna matter. But, uh, men like us, excuse me, men like us and Supreme Felons, what you're looking at is an individual that's been home 16 months from serving the 16-year incarceration. And the NDOC, um, as it's supposed to do is to teach me, um, how to think differently. In essence, would help me behave differently, right? No. No, it was older individuals that seen something to me that I couldn't see in myself. It was them who helped change my mindset. It was them that saved my life. I'm letting you know, I was the robber. I was the stealer. And many of you would have been my victims. I'm telling you that right now. A couple of you I would love to get. But I don't think that way anymore. And it, but it took a long time. It didn't happen overnight. But it was because I kept seeing the older guys out on the yard. I was a terror once I went, I came down. I didn't like authority. What? I was bucking against everything. 25-year-old young man serving 16 years. I ain't see no light. I ain't, there was no future. But it was them who seen something to me, again, that I couldn't see in myself. And like I said, it was a process. But the only, only thing that was to turn me not to fight even more, stab this guy for just saying something, looking at me wrong or busting one of the COs in the head is because I kept seeing them. And I kept getting tired of them saying, "Young man, young man, young man." And somehow miraculously, guess what? I stopped doing it. So guess what they doing? They doing the exact same thing that they was doing inside. But you know what? This is, this is the beauty of it though. It inspired me to do what they was doing inside, out here too. So if it wasn't for Supreme Felons and men like them, you would probably be my victim or I'd probably be dead. That's real talk. Now, I hear that you're trying to shut down an establishment that is actually doing good, right? That's providing a place where organizations like men like us and many other community-based organizations that are trying to establish, trying to find creative ways to fix the problem that y'all trying to say that they the cause of. I'm here to let you know, um, I hope I'm not incriminating myself. I think the statue is over there. Let me talk to the lawyer. Okay, so, um, I used to go to clubs. And I didn't give a damn who was the owner, who was the security, none of that. And I committed acts. It's not their fault. I go there because I know this is where my potential victims are going to be. Can you blame the owner? No. No, you blame me. Because I'm the one who went there with their intentions on doing something bad. I also want to share this with you. Because of men like us and men like Artist Lewis and the people that's in his organization and these beautiful young men and older men of Supreme Felons, you're now looking at, mind you, I'm still on parole, y'all. Mind you, I only been home 16 months. It was off their backs that you're now looking at a regional coordinator and a program director for two different nonprofits that solely helps the formerly incarcerated. And because them is where my passion lies. Because if it didn't fix me, what? When I found out that I had more to offer and I benefited from old heads like that, I felt compelled, it was my duty to do the same. And Artist opened up his door for me to try to reach the community, to try to reach the youngsters. See, they, they are, we are, we are in different age groups, right? But yet we are still on the same mission. So some youngsters might not go to them, but they come to me. And then I go to them. If it's something I can't answer or I can't finish or I can't fix. But guess what? I had a place to where I was organizing that, that we were talking about the community issues and how to actually fix them without involving police, without involving other things, right? Other means of violence. But you just closed that for me. Artist called me and he say, "Uh, hey, bro. Um, I can't, I can't, I, I can't have you do the meeting this week because I gotta do this wake. I gotta do this repass." I said, "Yeah, okay." Said, "Man, yeah, this family couldn't do nothing." I said, "Hey, you don't gotta tell me that. I'll do it next week." And I called some other people to let them know, "Hey, it's canceled, but it's going on next week." I had 10 people, 10, that I know is from the community that's doing evil, that I seen them out there doing evil. And I stopped them. And said, "Man, come on to this meeting. Come see what we about." Guess what? It was closed. I couldn't have it. So I'm wondering, are you gonna be their victims?
Good evening. My name is Crystal Light. I am a resident of Superior Township. I am here just to advocate and to ask your consideration that tonight you table the resolution that you have, um, coming before us as you need to go back and revise and revisit, um, the resolution as it is unfair and unjust for, um, a board or a board member to utilize their emotional, um, and their emotional discretion because of things that have happened in the past. And so it is my ask, um, and it behooves that you, that you do table, um, this resolution and reconsider. I work with returning citizens. I am the director of a program, um, at our local university. I work with the returning citizens. I have relationships with different organizations that all received ARPA funding. It was a process that was done, uh, for them to receive the funds. And everyone went through the process. Those organizations that I work with daily, uh, they went through this process. They receive, they were awarded the ARPA funding so that the organization, uh, could work in our communities as they do. And they do it well. Um, I can say that the Supreme Felons are doing a wonderful job. They received that funding and they're doing what they're supposed to do. Um, I work with the Brighter Way. They're doing their job. They're doing what they're supposed to do because I have individuals that go into those organizations and work with those organizations. And my university, they receive federal dollars. And so just as well as these programs has, everything is working. So as I said, it behooves you to reconsider and re-table this resolution and to go back and rethink. It would be very wise to do so. So that's what I'm asking. I'm asking that the township reconsiders, um, dismantling an organization that went through a strenuous process to receive funding that was available just as and provided to them after a long process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
I concur with what the sister just said about the re-tableing process. I want you all to know I am a redeemed felon. I am a redeemed felon. And let me explain that to you. I'm a redeemed felon because I was shaped in a nicotine and received in sin. Now watch this. But thanks be to God, he gave up his son to die for me that I might come to him and I'm redeemed. Why? Lee Touson, why are you redeemed? Because I went against the law of God. But thanks be to God, I'm redeemed. Now I want you guys to understand one thing. My era been to the ground since 1986. And you must understand there's an instigator in the house somewhere. Not in this particular house here, but there's an instigator in the house. And I want you all to understand that. And I won't have to go into no details. I'm not against positive things that the felons are doing. Guy asked me the other day, he said, "Man, why can't you address them as Supreme Felons?" I said, "That's the name they chose." I says, "That's not the name I would want to use." Because if I say Supreme, I'm putting somebody on top of God. And I can't do that. But I'm not against what the fellow, what the felons are doing. I'm down with what they're doing if they are contributing to the needs of my young brothers and sisters, whether they be black or white. But look at this here. Look at this. God didn't tell Billy and none of the other felons to go in the highways and, and hedges and compel them to come. He put that on the preachers. Y'all hear me? He put that on the preachers. And if the preachers was doing what they are supposed to do, perhaps the Supreme Felons wouldn't have to be out there. But they are out there and they doing their thing. And if they are doing their thing to save lives, it's gonna be appreciated by me. I went to a funeral today. A little boy that was born, and I ain't the worst circle, in the back of me. I went to his funeral today. I watched him grow up as a little kid, but he died violently. And you know what I said to myself? I said to myself, "Here I am. I knew him." And then I blame his avenue, some of his avenue on me because I knew him. And I should have stuck with him to make sure that he stayed on straight street. But if these guys out here making sure that these kids stay on straight street, fine with me. I got no problem with that. And I'll ask the board, "Hey, you guys know about that tabling process? Table it. Table it and, and, and go have a talk. Go have a talk." Now, 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 watch this. When it come down to, when it come down to Brother Lewis's situation, I have told, since 1986, those of you that know me, I've told black folks, it's easier to fight, to keep your community. I've told black folks, it's easier to fight to keep your community than to let your community get away and talk about you gonna fight to get it back. The booger man gonna get you, before that happen. You got to do it on the onset. You got to be proactive. And I wish, even this meeting here, I wish it had been a proactive thing and I wish we had known about what's happening full time tonight. I wish, I just wish. Brother Louis, I was impressed at a rally that was in West Willow. He stepped up to the podium and he had his little boy with him. I was impressed that this black man had his little young black boy, let me take that back, his little young black son there with him. I was impressed. But what's happening now, the only vindication that Brother Louis is gonna get is through the courts. That's who has to vindicate him, although he has done great things. And let me put this to y'all, and I'm gonna sit down. I'm gonna sit down. I hear a lot of talk about certain people that's sitting on this board up here. Aw shucks. Cut that off, sister, you know how to cut it off. I hear a lot of talk about some people that's on this board here. And mainly things are pointed toward Doug Winters, who's the attorney. Y'all listen to me, huh? Things are being pointed toward him. If these allegations comes before Doug Winters and he doesn't do anything about them, if he doesn't address them, then who's at fault? He's at derelict duty if he don't do that. So he has to do that. But when it come down to people saying, "I don't see him. I don't know him," probably because you haven't taken out time to know him. You haven't seen him on the south side of the city. I live on the south side. I've been on the south side since 1956. That's a long time. Introduced to Doug Winters in 1972. And we had a problem with the commissioners just a little while ago. He was deemed as a racist. And I explained to them what a racist don't do. I explained specifically to them what a racist don't do. And I'll give you just a little portion of it, then I'm gonna sit down. Racists don't come to the aid of blacks that cannot afford a lawyer, whether it be criminal or civil. Racists don't do that. But Doug Winters did that. And it bothers me when folks say he's a racist, because you got to know him first. Racists don't come to an ex-councilperson's aid when the mayor of the city, not the present mayor, a past mayor of the city, city manager and part of white council wanted her seat. Doug Winters came to that black councilperson's aid. Y'all hear me, huh? Racists don't do that. He came to her aid. He hired three black lawyers. He didn't have no white man. He hired three black lawyers that came to her aid. And guess what? They came to a council meeting and guess what? She kept her seat. Racists don't do that. They do not. Racists, y'all telling me you're talking about? Racists do not come to public housing directors' aid when the city of Ypsilanti accused them of stealing eighty-nine thousand dollars. And the city of Ypsilanti knew he hadn't stolen it. But guess what? The racists that we claim came to the public housing director's aid and we found out, Plant Moran came in, y'all know Plant Moran. They came in and they found out, "No, he didn't steal it. What happened with that eighty-nine thousand dollars was the city paid it under the table because they didn't want nobody to know where their accounts was." Guess who headed that? Doug Winters. Racists don't do that. Racists don't stop in the tracks and stand still when white folks is trying to get all the black folks downtown Ypsilanti to start braiding hell. Doug Winters stepped in. Racists do not come to the aid of a black church when the mayor, Cheryl Farmer at that time, trying to get the black church out of there because she wanted bars and deja vu. Guess who came to the aid? Doug Winters did. So you all, if you don't know Doug Winters, ask me about Doug Winters and I can tell you about it. And you know, I'm gonna sit down, I promise y'all. I'm finna sit down, Sister Stumble, I know you tired of me. But I'm gonna sit down here. But I remember when Elisa Vett was running for the prosecutor's seat. And guess what happened? Every time it was an engagement, they called him to the mic. You know what they said? "He's white, but he's all right." And you know what I done? I challenged him. I said, "Man, why you let folks do that to you?" He didn't know no better than guess. But let me show y'all something. Let me show y'all something. Doug Winters, he's a white man. Absolutely, he's a white man. And I'm gonna put this on you. If he wasn't no count, if he wasn't fair, you best to believe Lee Tooson wouldn't fool with him.
You need to be ashamed. Now, let's get back to where the ghost can get it. Because all that nonsense, what he talking about, don't matter. We gotta get this back on track. Because the bottom line, we speaking about Supreme Felon and about Archie. Let's keep focused on that. Because if we don't keep focused on, we gonna get lost. Some of y'all already lost. I'm not coming up here to defend Doug Winters. I'm coming here to speak of this man. Because I've been knowing him since he was a kid. And I come to speak on righteousness. Y'all need to get y'all ass together and quit trying to destroy the community. I'm not saying that, y'all not trying to do that. But actions speak louder than words. Now, I'ma shut up because I'm not gonna keep running my mouth trying to defend anybody, but I will defend him. Because see, I was with him. I should've been locked up too. But I'm telling you this, y'all better do the right thing. Because it ain't gonna take too long for the balance. Vote. 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 You have to use your power in voting. Don't sit around no more, y'all, like we been doing. You can't even afford to sit around now. You see what's going on? Wake up! Wake up. This community need us. Our young people need us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elisa Boyd. And I grew up in Ypsilanti. And I moved out for a while and I came back because one person asked me to come back because I wanted to give back to my community. If I could sit here and give you my testimony, you guys probably could write a book about what I've been through. But I do know one thing. Ypsilanti needs this. And the reason why I say this is because I grew up, my parents had companies, C and T Collision on Michigan Ave, right next to Bill Hot Dogs. My mom had accounting firm, Baker and Associates. God rest their souls because they're not with me anymore. But there was one thing, I made myself homeless in 2000 and my mom thought I lost my mind because I told her that nobody could help me because I went down to DHS and they told me I made too much money. And I had a budget for two hundred bucks, that's all I needed. And they told me that I had to be homeless to get help. So you know what I did? I packed up my kids and went back down there at eight-thirty that morning, down there on E Course Road to the DHS and said, "I'm homeless now. What are you gonna do to help me?" They put me in the program SOS. SOS told me at that time that I had to give up everything and figure out what I wanted to do. And it was a lady, her name was Barbara. I had three kids, single mom, left everything behind. And she told me, "What do you want to do?" I told her, I said, "I wanna go back and get my GED." Because I dropped out in tenth grade when I was pregnant. And she went ahead and told me, "Go back and get your GED." I said, "Okay." So I went and got my GED. And she's like, "What do you wanna do now?" Well, at that time, I still needed to take care of my kids, but I was in that SOS program that taught me how to give back and learn. I promised her, Barbara, in the SOS, that I would not stop my education until I got my bachelor's. Well, guess what? I went beyond my bachelor's. I have my master's in business with a specialization with finance. Billy asked me to come and help him because they did not know, because they were in prison. I didn't judge him from that. They went through a lot to get this money. It wasn't given to them overnight. We had to work hard to show them what we were gonna do for our community. That's the point, our community. And the one thing that our community needs to do every day is think about our kids. Because if we don't think about our children, that's our future. That's our future. And if we don't help them now, this is just gonna be a cycle over and over and over and over again. He did what he needed to do and he's doing it every single day. He's giving these gentlemen a opportunity to give back as well. And the best thing as well as these people, because they've been there. My husband was in prison. And you guys judge people right off the rip. Yes, I understand, people seen death. I've seen death. But the thing is, we have to make a change. And the only way we can make a change is everybody works together. We all have our own parts. And I asked Billy the other day, "How many black businesses do we have in Ypsilanti?" Can you guys tell me? Six. There's a problem right there. How do we both to teach our youth that is very important about business if we don't have something to teach them? What I love about Billy's program, he's teaching every day. And what's on his t-shirt, "Reach One, Teach One", that's what we need to be doing instead of trying to disturb somebody's plan. You guys don't understand, God already put this in plan. We both to follow his plan. How do we both to be peaceful when we continue to destroy God's plan? We need to come together. That's the only way you can heal too. We have to work together instead of pointing fingers and accusing everybody of doing something wrong when you don't even give somebody that opportunity to even finish. They just started, just like the gentleman with his business. Work with us. Don't judge us. It's time to make that change. And it's time for us to come together. We're the only ones that can save our children. Because at the end of the day, nobody else cares about us and we know that. We see that. Especially when money comes into the community, of Washtenaw Community, they don't separate it the right way. They don't. They always take it to the upper class first and then we get the crumbs. I see it because I did the education. And it's time for us to make the change. We got blessed with the federal government to give us this money to make a change in our community. That is our job to do, period, with the board, with the community, with us all. That's the only way we can make a change, is if we work together. And stop picking on each other because at the end of the day, can we take the money to heaven? Can we? No. But if that tool, and that's all I look at it, as money is a tool to save five or ten, fifteen more people and our children, I think it's worth it. I think it's time for us to get together and communicate with each other to see what we can do to help Billy and Supreme Felons instead of discouraging them, as well as this gentleman that I just found out about your business. How many gas stations are owned by black people in this town? But it's okay to put that liquor store up right around the corner from us. I know what has happened too, when they cut the funds and closed all the mental hospitals. We don't have no resources to help anybody with issues. And it's, here we go again. It's our community trying to piece up and train and learn how to communicate with people so they don't hurt themselves and they don't make the wrong judgment. I was a single mom. And guess what? My kids was raised with TVs half the time because I was out there working three jobs just to make sure the roof was over their heads and food on the table. We need the community back. And that is part of you guys too. So before you guys judge somebody, you guys need to honestly sit down and ask what they need help with as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna have one more comment and then we're gonna go to the regular meeting. One more, Ms. Commissioner.
Thank you. Annie Somerville, I live in the city of Ypsilanti, but I have the privilege of serving part of Ypsilanti Township on the Washtenaw County Board of Commission. Recently, there was an attempt, a few different times, to shame me and my colleagues for our support for Supreme Felons, in particular glamorizing the Supreme Felons, taking pictures with them, sitting next to them. And my immediate reaction was that I have no shame in my relationship with members of the Supreme Felons or anybody who's formerly incarcerated regardless of their crime. But I'm not here to shame you all despite felony. But I'm not here to shame you all despite folks shaming me for my support for formerly incarcerated people. I really am here to ask you to forgive and consider redemption and that people are not the worst things that they've ever done. Billy Cole was a kid when he did something really, really bad, and he served 43 years in prison. The Michigan Parole Board let him out of prison after serving 43 years. Most juveniles who serve that long in prison actually don't make it out alive. We had one kid in Michigan get out after serving 60 years, and he died within the first year because prison puts so much on your life and you lose many years for being inside. Because we don't take care of people, we don't prioritize physical health, we don't prioritize mental health, and we criminalize poverty and we push black kids into the prison pipeline from school. Some of them don't even, they get to prison before they get to high school. And I'm not shaming anyone, but I just want to say what this looks like. The attempts to discredit black men in the community, whether it's men like us or the Supreme Felons, looks a certain way. And so the resolution, despite the fact that it doesn't mean anything, because Supreme Felons is going to exist, they are people who exist in our community and will continue to exist whether or not this resolution passes, and also the Board of Commissioners isn't going to do anything to eliminate the name of the neighborhoods that are listed. But we are going to continue to support them and walk with them, and I'm asking you to walk with us because I do believe in redemption. I don't think that maybe people weren't considering all the harm that this could cause by putting this resolution on the agenda, but what it says is that despite the fact that we put millions of dollars every year into policing and haven't reduced gun violence and shootings still happen, but because some folks who are formerly incarcerated got a little bit of money, which by the way, they just didn't get a check for $1.2 million. That's not how that happened. They haven't even gotten half of that. So I really am here to say that people are possible, it's possible for people to change. And I hope that after the comments that you've heard tonight, that you will work with all of us, and I do mean that wholeheartedly. And I think, I know my friends pretty well to know that they believe in forgiveness. And so despite all of the harm that even seeing that resolution called for them, I do really want us all to work together because kids are dying, kids are getting shoved into prison, and we're all adults and it's our responsibility to protect them, and it starts with government. And so whether it's local or county or state or federal, and by the way, the state of Michigan just passed millions of dollars in the state budget to support community violence interruption. So programs like Supreme Felons, I mean, part of what they're doing here is even, was the blueprint for people in Lansing to even be able to talk about what that would look like on a statewide scale in communities similar to Ypsilanti and other parts of Michigan, which happen to be black communities. And so supporting this work is also supporting black people, and just for the record, you can do good things for black people and have black friends and still be racist.
Carissa, we're done with public comments. We're going to move on to the agenda.
Okay, can I say this one thing?
No, I'm sorry, we have to move on, Carissa.
They need to vote it down. Don't table it, vote it down.
She does that. That's how she acts.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Let's have some orders.
Listen, just one thing.
Wait, Carissa.
All that talking about one who's racist, we ain't talking about racist. We talking the way men do. Men hide up under the cover, and when you pull the sheet off, I got four sons, they hide up under the cover, some men, and when you pull their sheet off, they got an erection.
They're inappropriate.
Madam Chair.
I'd like to make one comparison if you'll give me time. This money that we're trying to delineate from these people, how many black people do you see working on these roads?
Sir, I understand. We've had an hour and a half of public comment. We're going to move through the agenda, so please stay for the agenda, okay? All right, Mr. Eldridge.
Madam Chair, if the Board would grant me the right, I would like to take and move past the consent agenda, the attorney report, and the old business to new business and move to item number two regarding the resolution. I appreciate everybody coming this evening, hearing the comments. I would offer this, a motion to table this evening so that we can sit our Police Services Committee, Trustee Newman, Trustee Hunter, and I would ask, I thought I saw him in the building earlier, County Administrator Dill to sit in on our meetings so that we can There's been a lot said this evening that's not correct, and I would like to have the opportunity, as I think my other board members would, to sit and talk with you. Brian, I've grown up with you, and I'm willing to do that. We were never given that opportunity previously. So a lot of the issues this evening are like many issues in our community, and I've grown up here for over 60 years. These issues arise like this this evening because we don't talk. So I would offer to the Board a motion to table for 30 days to give us an opportunity to sit and speak and be honest with one another. That would be my motion.
That's a motion, a support is in order?
Support. Support Hunter.
Support Brian, support Hunter. There's a motion and support to table for 30 days.
Madam Chair, I would just like to say, no matter when this resolution comes back, if it's now or in 30 days, I will not be supporting it. I've shared that with some of our board members and some of the members here tonight. And I appreciate your applause, but this isn't about me. I've listened to this, and we keep talking about community and trauma, and all this is doing is causing that to happen again. And I just want to say that Dana, I think, at Mr. Harris, I completely agree, this is solidarity and support, and I'm so thankful that you all came out tonight. So I'll vote in support of if the Board wants to table it, but when it comes back in 30 days, I will still be voting the same way, which is how I would vote tonight, and that is known.
Madam Chair. We're still on a discussion.
So what about men like us?
Madam Chair, we're on a discussion, we're still on a discussion. Mr. Lewis.
You don't discuss.
Can I make a point? But I'm not, I'm not making a discussion, but just a point, as Heather did. Do you want me to do it or not?
Yeah, she can, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to say, one of the things that bothered me was that there was never discussion about this with the men's, I'm sorry, not the men's, but the felons. And it should have happened a long time ago with the county and the township, not pushing y'all down, why couldn't we come to the table? And that's my point, huh? That's what I'm hearing. And that's what really bothered me. You started in January, county sent out a letter, what was that, in May? And then they sent out a letter, they didn't return this, sent out a letter in April. We should have came to table the first time. I would say you must come together in respect, or you're not going to get anything done on both parties. So I just want to make that point.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a support to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda under consent is minutes, wait, can we, can we be quiet as we exit so just we can continue? Thank you. On the consent agenda, we have minutes of the July 18th work session. We have statements and checks and the treasures report for July of 2023.
So move.
Support.
Motion, Row, support Eldridge to approve the consent agenda. Is there, we have a motion to support discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Winters, is there any general legal update?
Madam Supervisor, can I ask that, may I say something and have them be quiet because we can't hear the meeting?
Oh, yeah. Could you guys please, thank you, thank you, Ms. Kaiser, I apologize. Under old business, we have, it's not the first reading, it's actually the second reading of Proposed Ordinance 2023-503, which sets the sewer rate for Ypsilanti Township. Clerk Row.
So move.
Oh, you can't hear?
She said, "What are we going to do about men like them?"
Oh, that's not on the agenda, ma'am. It's not on the agenda, no. Okay, Clerk Row?
No, you have to, it's, it's our ordinance, we have to read it. I have an ordinance, 2023-503, an ordinance to amend Chapter 62, Article 4, Section 62-77, the Code of Ordinances, Charter Township.
Can you please, please let us continue with the meeting and if, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I take a point of personal privilege, please?
No, sir, not now. We have got to finish this agenda. We're doing the first reading on, or the second reading on our ordinance.
Okay, well, point of order, I think that was uncalled for, for you to just shoot me down like that. This is an open forum meeting, and when somebody says point of privilege, they're supposed to be recognized to speak. That's under Roberts Rules of Order.
I have an ordinance to amend Chapter 62, Article 4, Section 62-77 of the Code of Ordinances, Charter Township of Ypsilanti, to adjust the sewage disposal rates. Be ordered by the Charter Township of Ypsilanti that Section 62-77 of Chapter 62, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances be revised as follows. For all bills rendered prior to September 1st, 2023, existing sewage disposal service rates shall prevail. For all billings rendered on or after September 1st, 2023, charges for sewage disposal services shall be as follows for each bimonthly or two-month period. One, readiness to serve rates based on size of meter. Meter size, 5/8 to 3/4 is $18.17. One is $45.43. One to one and a half is $90.86. Two is $145.38. Three is $454.30. Four is $908.61. Six is $1,600, or $817. Twenty cents, eight inches is $3,180.11. Ten is $4,997.31. And twelve is $5,905.92. The commodity rate is 9.2, or $2.99, $2.99 per 100 cubic feet. Would so move the second reading of Ordinance 2023-503.
We have a motion support, and I know the Director of Yucca is here. This is a 4% increase and, go ahead.
The proposed ordinance is for a 4% increase in the sewage rates. The increase, as discussed at the July 18th trustee meeting, is really driven by increases in chemicals, utilities, parts, equipment, and supplies, and primarily professional services at the wastewater treatment plant and the collection system. And I welcome any questions.
Any questions or comment? Hearing none, it's our ordinance, we have to do a roll call vote. Swanson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Stumbo vote yes, Eldridge?
Yes.
Hunter?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted, the second reading.
Thank you.
Number two is the second reading of the proposed ordinance, which adjusts the water service rates.
I have Proposed Ordinance 2023-504, an ordinance to amend Chapter 62, Article 4, Section 62-76A1 of the Code of Ordinances, Charter Township of Ypsilanti, to adjust water service rates. Be ordered by the Charter of Township of Ypsilanti that Section 62-76A1 of Chapter 62, Article 4, the Code of Ordinances be revised as follows. For all billings rendered prior to September 1st, 2023, existing water service rate shall prevail. For all billings rendered on or after September 1st, 2023, charge for water service rate shall be as follows for each bimonthly or two-monthly period. One, readiness to serve based on size of meter. Meter size, 5/8 to 3/4 is $17.40. One inch is $43.50. One to one and a half is $87.10. Two is $139.21. Three is $435.03. Four is $870.06. Six is $1,740.12. Eight is $3,045.21. Ten, $4,785.32. Twelve, $5,655.38. There's a commodity rate of $3.76 per 100 cubic feet, and I would so move Ordinance 2023-504.
Support.
Motion, Row, support Eldridge to approve the second reading of the proposed ordinance for water rates. Questions or comments?
I would just remind the Board that the 4% water increase is primarily driven by the Great Lakes Water Authority increase that's passed on to YCWA that became effective July 1st. The sewer and water increases, 4% combined, would place an average consumer's water bill at about $103.10 on a bimonthly basis, or increase it just under $4 on a bimonthly basis. And welcome any questions.
It was $103 for?
It's 100, the, we look at what an average customer would use for water consumption, and it's about 10 units of usage. That's not really including sprinkler usage and so forth, but basic residential usage. It's about 10 units, and an average bimonthly bill with these new rates for water and sewer would be $103.10.
It's an increase of about?
Just under $4, $3.97.
For bimonthly?
Bimonthly.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Again, we'll go with Hunter.
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Stumbo vote yes, Row?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Second reading is approved.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a request to approve the L4029-2023 text, oh, I've missed one, I'm sorry. The first reading of Resolution 2023-12, which is a proposed ordinance, 2023-505, and ordinance to amend Articles 4, 5, 11, 13, and 15 of the Township Zoning Ordinance. Clerk Row?
I have Resolution 2023-12, a resolution amending the Ypsilanti Township Zoning Ordinance in reference to Proposed Ordinance 2023-505. Whereas the Township Planning Department staff completed a detailed review of the Township Zoning Code, and whereas its regularly scheduled planning commission meeting held July 25th, 2023, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, whereas the Planning Commission for Ypsilanti Township recommended approval for the proposed zoning amendments to the Ypsilanti Township Code, to the Township Board of Trustees at its regular meeting of July 25th, 2023, which changes can be summarized as follows. Article 4, Section 407, residential multiple family low density. The expansion or construction of a single-family dwelling or accessory structure shall conform with the applicable minimum yard and setback requirements of the most comparable single-family zoning district. Two, Article 4, Section 408, residential multiple family medium density. The expansion or construction of a single-family dwelling or accessory structure shall conform with the applicable minimum yard and setback requirements of the most comparable single-family zoning district. Three, Article 4, Section 409, residential multiple family high density. A, the expansion or construction of a single-family dwelling accessory shall conform with the applicable minimum yard setbacks and requirements of the most comparable single-family zoning district. Article 4, Section 420.5, industrial use table, amended industrial district use table. Article 5, Section 506, town center, amending group two to allow for group uses one, two, three, and four. Six, Article 11, Section 1128, temporary sidewalk, outdoor, and tent sales for principal use. A, address- use, A, addresses the parking requirements of temporary sidewalk and outdoor sales. Seven, Article 13, Section 1305, fences and walls. A, eliminate illustration, illustration in Section 1305 and amend 1305 to A to include through laps. Article 15, Section 1509, signs, amend Section 1509.6A to B to change the area of wall signs permitted for each lot and to unit, as was intended, to section, to amend Section 1509.10 to eliminate wall painted signs. Now therefore be resolved that the Charter Township Board of Trustees hereby approve ordinance 2023-505 as attached by amending the Articles of the Township zoning ordinance as noted, replacing it with proposed ordinance number 2023-505. I'd so move the resolution.
Motion, Rowe, support Eldridge to approve the first reading of the resolution.
Discussion?
I had, I had one question. So, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this when we had somebody here who could answer it, but, um, I know that last time when we were making changes, we sent, um, met like mail to the properties that would have been impacted, because we had people show up to let us know what they were feeling about that. I don't know if the Planning Commission did that when they did their hearing, or are we planning on doing that? Because I think if your property is impacted by the change, we should notify them, so they have time to know there's going to be a public hearing, because if you don't know this is happening, um, you're not going to know to come and speak out. So I don't know if we're planning on doing that or not.
I'm not sure what the Plan, what the Planning Commission did. Norm?
Madam Chair, I, we can get clarification, Debbie. My understanding is that we did it before, because we changed the whole map, and I don't know that we're doing anything to change the, the primary zoning of the residents, but we can definitely get clarification from Jason and Fletcher about that.
Okay. Because my preference is that people know a change is going to happen if their prop, their existing property is impacted by that change. In some ways, it looks like what they're suggesting is actually going to be a benefit to the properties, because it's things we've learned, but I would still feel better if people knew that was coming.
And they did have the public hearing, and I'm not, like Heather said, I'm not sure who they notified on that. Any other questions or comments? We have a, Ryan? We have a motion in support. This is a roll call again. Swanson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Stumbo votes yes. Eldridge?
Yes.
And Hunter stepped out of, out of the boardroom for a couple minutes. So the motion is approved. The next item is a request to approve the L4029-2023 tax rate.
So move.
There's a, a motion to approve this and, um, a support.
What this does, it sets the taxes for the next year for the budget. Um, I know it's, it's not exciting budgeting and numbers and financial fiscal responsibility, but this is actually reducing the levy that was passed, um, last year, and that doesn't happen very often. Really trying hard and understand the challenges of taxation in our county, in our community, and how that contributes to the cost of housing, and rentals, actually. So when, when, um, there was a fire protection for capital improvement, it was a five-year levy, and that five-year levy, um, ceased to the end of this year, so we're not collecting next year. We did not go back out and ask for another, because we, when we adopted the resolution, it was for five years for capital improvements for the fire department to purchase, um, and we've been able to do that. So that'll reduce, um, the levy in the township. So I just wanted to share the good news on that. Questions or comments? Hearing done. We have a motion and a support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is a request to fill the Municipal Services Director position with an internal candidate, even though we interviewed externally as well, John Hines, with a starting salary of ninety thousand annually.
So move.
Motion, Rowe?
Support.
Peterson?
Peterson, to approve the hiring of, um, John Hines. Are there, there's an actual memorandum?
You want me to read it? I'll just read Karen Wallen, wasn't able to be here tonight. Um, we have a request to fill the Municipal Services Director position with a starting salary of ninety thousand annually. The position of Municipal Services Director was brought to the Township Board on June 20th, 2023 for consideration. The job description was revised to reflect suggestions and concerns that the Board brought forth at the June 20th meeting, and the position was officially posted on June 28th, 2023, the closing date of Friday, July 14th, 2023. The position was posted on the Township website, MLive, the Michigan Municipal League, and MTA sites. We received a total of eight applicants, including one internal candidate. Following review of the applicants, three candidates were selected for the interviews. The interviews took place on Monday, August 7th, with the interview panel, including Supervisor Stumbo, Treasurer Eldridge, and I. We were fortunate to be able to interview the three strong candidates. Request is being made that the Township Board approve the promotion of the internal candidate, John Hines, to the Municipal Services Director position with a starting salary of ninety thousand annually. John has served as an interim director for the last eight months, and has gained knowledge and experience through his positions of Recreation Coordinator, Recreation Director, Deputy Supervisor, and Interim RSD Director. Approval of an additional five thousand dollars upon John's successful completion of a six-month probationary period is also being requested. Your consideration in the matter is appreciated. Thank you.
Do we have questions or comments regarding that? I just, um, want to say that we've been out without a recreation, our Residential Services Director since January 6th, I think it was, is when Mike Hoffmeister left us, um, and took a job as a city manager in, in the village, is it a, I think it's a village, but it might be a city of Dundee, I'm not sure. But he left, and John Hines was my deputy supervisor, um, during, um, a hard time and recreation was closed down due to go COVID. He came over, he has skillfully learned the budget, the budget process, um, and that's very important in this, our Residential Services Director position. It is the largest department that oversees the most amount of, of people and the largest amount of money. So it's very important that someone has that understanding, and, um, John Hines has that, and I appreciate him stepping forward and being an interim, and you've done a very good job with the bids and the grant management and everything going on, and, um, we did have three good candidates, and clear, to me, you clearly had the most experience in this field to carry on this duty and responsibility, so, um, I wholeheartedly support the recommendation.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I just want to just add to the sentiment of what Supervisor Stumbo said. Um, I work a lot with John, like, in day-to-day, and, and you, you, I, we really appreciate working with you, John. If I need something done, I know I can count on John for anything. His follow-up is great, his relationship with employees is good, and, um, his understanding of the organization is really helpful. So thank you for being a great partner and team player. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comment? Hearing done, we have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, John. So now we have to fill the Director's position of Recreation. The next item on the agenda is to approve an agreement with Ernot Consulting to assist the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Police Steering Committee in developing a request for proposal in a not to exceed amount of two thousand five hundred dollars, which is budgeted, contingent upon the approval of the agreement by the Township Attorney.
So move Peterson.
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Rowe. Questions or comments? This was discussed at length in the work session. Hearing done? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This will be brought back to the Township Board as well. Number six is, um, Resolution 202311, which is application for laying out and designating a drainage district.
So move Peterson.
Uh, I have Resolution 2023-11, an application for laying out and designating a drainage district for the Ypsilanti Charter Township drain. Um, whereas the Charter Township requests the laying out and designating of a county drain drainage district located in Washtenaw County pursuant to Chapter 3 of Public Act 40 of 1956 as amended, and whereas the township has determined that the laying out and design, designating of the proposed drainage district is necessary for the public health in the township, and whereas the township will be liable for an assessment at large against it for a percentage of the cost of the proposed drain, now therefore be resolved that the Township Board does authorize the filing of an application with Washtenaw County Resources Commissioner for the laying out and designating of a drainage district. Be it further resolved that the Supervisors authorized to execute the application for laying out and designating the drainage district. Be it further resolved that the Clerk shall forward to the Washtenaw County Clerk, Water Resource Commissioner, a copy of this resolution for the application for laying out and designating a drainage district. And Gloria moved the resolution and Stan support. Right?
Correct. Discussion? We discussed this at the work session as well, and Evan Pratt was in attendance. And this also will come back to the Board with any costs that it may be in creating of the stormwater management district on Seaver property. So we have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to request to approve the, um, quote from single-source provider Image Trend for Incident Reporting Software for the Fire Department in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and three dollars, which is budgeted. It's contingent upon the Attorney's review and approval.
Okay, we'll support whichever. And yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Sorry, what did you say?
I was just, was finishing with the agenda item, that it was contingent upon the Attorney approval of the agreement, that's all.
We have a motion support?
Yeah. We have a motion support, is there a discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to request to approve the second agreement with the Washtenaw County Road Commission for Street Sweeping in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents.
So move Peterson.
Motion Peterson, support Hunter. This is kind of self-explanatory, but we only get one, um, street sweeping, and we have to pay additional dollars with the Washtenaw County Road Commission to have a second one. This will authorize that second one. Thank you for bringing that second one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to request to approve the agreement with Stan Tech Consulting to provide professional services related to the design, bid process, and project administration for the Township Community Center, the water damage renovation, in a not to exceed amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
So move.
Motion Eldridge, support Rowe. Just, discussion? Hearing, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10 is a request to approve the agreement with Stan Tech Consulting to provide professional services for the design, bid process, and the project administration for the Ypsilanti Township Community Center bathrooms in a not to exceed amount of ninety-eight thousand seven hundred dollars, which is budgeted.
So move.
Motion Rowe?
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11 is request to approve the agreement with Stan Tech Consultants for the professional services for the design and bid process and project administration for the Township Green Oaks Golf Course bathrooms in a not to exceed amount of fifty-eight thousand three hundred.
So move.
Motion Rowe?
Support.
Support Eldridge? Discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12 is request to set a public hearing date of Tuesday, September 19th, at approximately 7:00 PM for their special assessment levy.
So move.
Motion Rowe?
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson. Is there a discussion? This is an annual public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is Budget Amendment Number 11. Clerk Rowe?
I have a motion to amend the 2023 budget. I'd move to increase the JCPenney budget by fifteen thousand and seventy-one dollars to fourteen million six hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and approve the line item changes as outlined. I move to increase the environmental fund budget by one hundred and fifty thousand to three million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. I'd so move the budget amendment.
Support Peterson.
Motion Rowe, support Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number one, under authorization and bid, is a request to award the quote for flooring installation at 1405 Holmes Road to Ann Arbor Carpets, Inc., in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and eight dollars, which is budgeted and contingent upon Attorney, um, approval. Motion Eldridge?
Support.
Support Rowe? Discussion? This is, motion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is request to seek bids for the Ypsilanti Township helpful handbook and recreation guide, and this comes back to the Board.
So move.
Motion Rowe?
Support.
Support Eldridge? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a request for pre, approval to seek sealed bids for the parking entrance signage, design, and installation.
So move.
Support Peterson.
We have a motion in support. John, did you have something?
Oh, yeah, just a little background on this is, as part of the Township branding project, and just due to the overall age and state of the current signs, an RFP was put together to replace, uh, the parking entrance signs for 17 of our parks to start out with. This would be, uh, the parks that have the bigger eight and a half by three-foot signs, so three-foot tall, eight and a half long, and once the company would be secured, it would be brought to the Board of Trustees, we would bring back, um, signage requests for the other signs that would be, or the other parks that would have smaller signs that would match in, uh, kind of tone and design of the first ones that we seek the sealed bids for.
Madam Chair? John, I just, in our, in the bid specs, we could check tomorrow, it might just be either being awake and looking at my computer song, or the screen, but it's, it did, the color looks different on the logo.
So the RFP that was put together used the digital?
Okay.
Digital print. Yeah, so when you do the actual, um, paper print, it comes out the, the right color teal.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, it's very bright and loud.
Mint.
It's that algae boom, isn't it? So we have, any questions or comments? And this is kind of going through the entire township and the branding of our new logo and stuff, and putting it on our parks, as well as our buildings.
Yeah, so the design right now for park signs is, you know, the brown wooden boards with the yellow lettering, so this would be to get more of a composite material, that lasts a little bit longer, it's more durable, put the township logo, maybe put the address of the park, just make it more visual to anyone driving by, or someone looking for that park, and specifically to be able to know that they are at a township park, because that, I know is something that people might not be aware of right now, as they're coming in for, even like the Jazz Fest, Jazz Fest, for example.
Is the name of the park going to be prominent on it?
Oh, yeah, that'll be the biggest part.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can, we're waiting to see, to work with the company to see what kind of design they come back with, but yeah, so, for example, Ford Lake Park would be the biggest section, then maybe the address on the bottom, and then a spot for the logo, and also an MDNR plaque where applicable.
Because I think that long range, there's a lot that's going to have to be done to be cohesive, just with the color scheme, even, you know, probably everything when you're in the park should give the same kind of message, except the playgrounds. I'm thinking, because the playgrounds have, you know, their own color and stuff like that, but, you know, whether it's our trashcans, whether it's whatever, I don't, I'm not as particular about what that color is. I am very particular that when you go into the park, there should be a really cohesive look to it, matching colors that we were given from our branding. So I'm excited about this. So I'm excited about this, but I'm really personally picky about that kind of stuff, right? Like I know some painting done in the Ford Lake, on one, I think in all the pavilions, and I'm just not sure, like, how the color was picked, but I just feel like any of those decisions right now, it's so critically important for it to be a cohesive decision. That's what I would prefer to have happen. And I'm not sure the blue that was selected really is the blue that kind of, I know it's on the gatehouse, but I'm not sure that the gatehouse blue is even cohesive with this. So I just think that's really important, that we're thinking that way long-term. So thank you for starting this project.
Understand.
And when this comes back to the board, it'll have the...
Yeah, the final design will be brought back to the board for approval.
So we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is request to seek sealed bids for the renovation of Clubview Park Tennis Courts as part of the MDNR Land and Water Conservation Fund Development Project Agreement. Motion Eldridge?
Support.
Support Plinton? John?
Yeah, so I want to introduce Jennifer from Spicer, who was nice enough to join us tonight for the meeting. I know she's been part of this and the next items project a little bit longer than I have, but this was just bringing the authorization from the board to continue this Land and Water Conservation Fund Development Project to the next step, which would be to seek sealed bids. That way we can go out to bid to finally get the work started on the Clubview Park Tennis Courts. And I know something that the residents of that neighborhood are really looking forward to.
Yes. And there are tennis courts and pickleball courts.
Yes, tennis courts and pickleball courts.
And then they will come back to the Township Board for authorization, but I'm glad to see this moving forward. I'm glad to know that we actually received the grant dollar and approval finally, right? Well, we have to pay for it and get reimbursed, but at least we, they finally approved.
They approved the plans, yes.
They actually did, yeah. That's good news.
And I just want to say thank you for this. It was not a long time ago where there was consideration for ripping out many of the tennis courts. And when I was a park commissioner, I was adamantly against taking out infrastructure that we had. And so I'm really grateful to see that, even though that was a hurdle, that, that we didn't, that we didn't do that, because now we have infrastructure that can be repaired and people can enjoy something that would be a lot more costly to put in place if we were to try to do that, just spread from the ground up. So thank you for the work on this project. And pickleball is extremely popular.
Huge. It is huge.
We have many people coming from all over to play at Ford Lake Park consistently multiple days a week. We have people consistently playing in Community Center Park, and I think that in any of the other parks where we're putting it, even Burns Park, this is going to be a good thing. So thank you for that.
We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a request to seek sealed bids for the renovation Community Center Park Tennis Courts and Pickleball Courts.
So move.
Support Peterson.
We have a motion and support. This will be brought back to us as well, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a request to seek sealed bids for the repairs of Ford Lake Park Shelter 1 through 4 and West Willow Park Shelter as part of the American Rescue Plan ARPA project funding.
So move Peterson.
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Eldridge.
Yeah, so the Residential Services Department is requesting authorization to seek sealed bids for the repairs of shelters 1 through 4 at Ford Lake Park and the West Willow Park Shelter and the surrounding area as part of the board-approved resolution to approve the funding, ARPA funding dollars for both those projects. So attached was the RFP, and this will focus for West Willow, these are both projects that we could get done before the end of the year, if we so, if the board so chooses to approve. In looking at West Willow in particular, the shelter, the roof needs to be upgraded as well as the structure and the surrounding area. Ford Lake Park Shelter 1 needs new shingles as well as a little bit of restoration when it comes to removing the chimney, and the roof restoration will come on top of that. Shelter 2 will need a new concrete slab, a new set of shingles as well, new light fixtures. Shelter 3 would need new shingles as well, a new concrete slab, and then work on the electrical and light fixtures for that structure, because that's something that's actually giving us a lot of trouble right now. And then shelter number 4 would be wood stain to match the other shelters and kind of keeping with those brands, yes.
We have a motion and support, all in favor?
Well, can I, so, so I just, I want to know, are we going to get more information about exactly like what's going to happen in those structures? I know you're saying like what they need, but I think there was a hope that, you know, you said there's some electrical problems, that maybe there'd be some way to do even maybe some solar panels or test some stuff out like that. And so I, I don't know where we get to have that kind of a conversation or that kind of a discussion. But again, we're taking care of community property for the long haul, so planning like for the future is really important. I know a lot was said about how we chose to spend our ARPA money. I disagree that we didn't spend money on the people. This is a perfect example of our investment in the community property of the people. And if you go to our parks and you see how many people are hosting events, parties, showers, graduation parties, people, all different types of residents from all different places are putting money into the parks as a place where people can gather together and commune and celebrate was a use of ARPA dollars that the ARPA committee thought was really important. So I, I, the disconnect is where the funding goes and then how we know what's, what's going to go there and how we're going future forward. Because I think green energy was important to us, there's a lot of like things that we could do that these dollars could help us with, and I would just like to know as a board member, I mean, I don't have to be the one making all those decisions, but I want to know that those thoughts are on the table before we do anything pretty quickly, because I know with construction and those types of things, but I want to know that the investment of those ARPA dollars are going to do the types of things to make it easier for people to use those spaces for, you know, things that are important as they gather.
Hi, Jennifer Shahaba Spicer. So we, when we looked at the parks, we broke the project into basically three different bid packages. The first one is the shelters and kind of repairing the existing infrastructure. So we didn't look at solar panels, we were just really looking at upgrades to those existing facilities to make them not only safer, but a little bit more longevity for the future. But we do have two other packages that'll be coming before the board. The shelters at Lakeside Park and at Ford Heritage Park, those are going to be new, and there's going to be a lot more involvement with the community on those. And then we have site improvements at various, the other, the other parks as well, so Burns Park, West Willow, Ford Heritage, we also have site improvements that we're working on there. So once we kind of move toward getting that stuff done and getting our topo back in and that kind of stuff, we'll have more on that. But this was really with the, the size project and the package we could put out now, but those other pieces I think are going to have a lot more involvement of a committee or something like that through John.
And I do know that we've been looking at solar for probably the last four months, maybe, to figure out what's the best way to do solar lighting in, in our parks too. So, but we're just not here today with that.
Well, cohesiveness again is just super, super important to me. And so, you know, before, I mean, there's just a lot of decisions where maybe a couple people say, eh, why don't we do this? And I think if you're going to try to be cohesive as a community, you have to have a plan for that, kind of a big picture plan, because it can't be piecemealed by a few people's ideas. And I'm not like complaining about anybody, I'm just saying that visually, we spent a lot of money on branding, and so that's the long-term plan, is like, what does it look like? Like somebody might go into one of the shelters, like the Ford Lake shelters, I spend a lot of time in that particular park, and inside the pavilion, it's beautiful woods. So somebody might go in there and say, ah, we need to do something, but then it looks like at some point in time, there was a great attempt to align the structures in that park with nature. And if we're not going to go in that vein, I think we have to be thoughtful about it and communicate with each other. It can't be like an individual or a couple people deciding what happens with community property. Because in my mind, community property is generational wealth that we're handing down through our generations, and it's our job just to be good stewards of it cohesively. So that's the way I look at it, and it's just important to me that that speaks to how we care for our parks. Because we have a lot of beautiful parks, but we have a lot of beautiful parks that have been in existence for a long time, and we haven't been able to always upgrade things with the way, you know, time goes, because there's other needs. So I'm hoping that, I mean, the hope was even with the ARPA dollars, that it gives us a chance to reinvigorate the, for, for, for a longer period of time, for others to enjoy for a long time. Okay? I'll get off. That is some passion about that. You know, 20 years of partnership says, you have a ton of those things.
We hear you.
Okay. I'm glad I heard.
And agree with you.
I'm glad you have to.
But I do on this, I do on this one. So we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a request to seek sealed bids for the Ridge Road Sidewalk Project.
So move.
Support Peterson.
The motion Row, support Peterson to approve this. OHM couldn't be here for this, they were trying to, they have the bid spec, it out so that we can bid in the fall. And so that we can try to get better bids on our sidewalk. This is going to be, and they might even be able to do it this year, I'm not sure. We approved the lighting on Ridge Road from Mott all the way to Michigan Avenue, and this is the sidewalk portion to go out for bid in order to have a walkable community. And then Apple Ridge Park is, also has a lot of money that's going to be having improvements in that park as well. So I just, it's kind of part of the investments, I think, in the area. And I'm proud of. We have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business to come up with this?
Motion support.
I am wanting to say something, I don't know when we get to speak based on everything that happened here tonight, but is that out of order, or is that?
No, we have, we have other...
Should I do that during updates, or before we adjourn? Okay. So the first thing I want to say is thank you to people for coming out and expressing, and people aren't here to hear that, but I am grateful that people came out to express their feelings and they're thinking about things, because that's always a good thing when a community expresses how they're feeling and they're thinking. I am mindful, though, that even when a room is filled, as filled as it was today, that we do represent over 50,000 people. And so our thoughts have to be on a big picture. I want to say thank you to my fellow board members for respectfully listening to people when they shared, because I think that's really important. Sometimes meetings, that doesn't happen, and I appreciate that we were taking in information, we were listening respectfully. I am concerned about some of the things that were represented in the resolution, and that I am very uncomfortable with two neighborhoods being targeted, and I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that as those decisions were being made about us, we heard many people speak in the room about how frustrated they were that we weren't listening to them. But I think it's important for people to understand that the decisions that we brought that to the table were decisions where, as Trustee Peterson said, individuals did not come to us. They made decisions, they targeted neighborhoods in a contract that they signed with somebody for our community, and I do have concerns for that. So I know that there are trustees who stepped up and said they're willing to kind of do some meetings. I really need to know that that's going to be addressed. Many of us attend Neighborhood Watch meetings on a regular basis. There are concerns that are expressed at every Neighborhood Watch meeting that are consistent, and what they're asking for is not what was placed in a contract on our behalf. So it's important to know that, because we are going out and we are listening to people. And I'm not here to make a decision about organizations, I'm just talking about what was put in a contract for our residents without us at the table and without going into the neighborhoods and, and talking to specific neighborhoods. I think when you make statements that there's data and statistics, I feel like as someone said that spoke, there's a responsibility to come to talk to us about those statistics and to really see what, what are those statistics about? We don't get to problems without doing that kind of stuff. And so I'm just want, I want the board to know, like if, if there are people who are going to meet and they're going to talk about that, that's really going to have to be something that's explained. And then the idea, really, this, this was a very specific resolution about two things. It was about dispatch and it was about patrolling. Those two things. It was not about dismantling any organization. It was not about taking funding away from organizations, we don't have the authority to do that. It's true that there is a crisis in our community, in the county, and as one, as one person spoke and said, it's bigger than two neighborhoods. So it, if, if the county wanted those services, they could offer it to a greater population of people rather than targeting two specific neighborhoods. And I'm concerned about that, because that is not what the residents in those neighborhoods are asking for through their Neighborhood Watch meetings. They may be doing something in some other venue, but that's not what we're hearing. I have been pressing this idea of how are we going to help people who are asking for help? And I'm going to continue to press that, and I'm willing to work on that, but I need people to know that I don't believe in targeting specific neighborhoods. I don't think that's okay for us to do that when the problem is so much bigger than anything that's happening in any two particular neighborhoods. And then the last thing I'll say that you guys have all heard me say many, many times, if we want to help children, we have to pay attention to what's happening in our schools. I would love to see a group as large as showed up here to be at a board meeting as passionate about that helping. I, 38 years, I will start my 38th year teaching school in this community, and as some people said, we are losing them at early, early ages, but we can't take a walk on making sure schools are doing that first layer of what they need to do. We don't have authority from a board seat with school issues, the school board does, but we do need, I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea that what I see happening right now is we're skirting around the schools rather than going through the schools. And I think that is what's going to help more people in more time, personally, me. So I'm willing to listen, I'm willing to talk, I'm willing to hear, contrary to statements said today, we are out in the community, we are attending meetings with people, I'm not everywhere. If somebody feels like I haven't been somewhere and I need to be there, I'm open to an invitation to do that. But it is concerning that decisions are made on our behalf without involving us in those decisions.
Any other comment? I, I just want to say, I agree with Trustee Swanson. Go ahead, John.
I, I just, in, in reflection of the day's events, I, like, Trustee Swanson didn't think that it was about disbanding any group or any organization. And I think it got misunderstood, because it was just an adjustment to a contract, absolving us of responsibility. And for some reason, it just got out of hand. I mean, people did express themselves, but it was not about what they thought it was about. To make it a racial thing, I, I just thought that, you know, it was, it was misguided.
Thank you. I just want to say it was about a contract to dispatch and patrol in our neighborhoods, and we don't even know what that means. We were not included in the conversation. The three full-time officials did meet with Greg Doel. We tried to get clarity, and he didn't know at the time when we met with him. And it was about liability and our obligation as a contract community with the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department. That is the only people that we contract with in our neighborhoods to do dispatch and... and patrol. I don't, I don't understand, have no clue what dispatch and patrol means in the, in the contract that was given. So...
And I, I just found it interesting that Mr. Foley said that they're not interested in patrolling, they're not interested in dispatch, they're just a Neighborhood Watch group. So at that point, I thought there was an agreement that if they're not a watch group nor a dispatch, and striking that from the record, I don't see where the disconnect came or all the, the dissension. But we, we did listen and that was a good thing.
Right. And they'll meet with the police committee?
Yes.
Greg Dill?
And, and that was my only purpose. We, we haven't met with them through no fault of our own.
Right.
So I think if you take 30 days, it doesn't change anything that's going on right now. It gives us the opportunity to explain to them face-to-face what we want out of that contract. And maybe that'll alleviate another board meeting like that where people were passionate. I get it. I appreciate it. But their facts weren't correct at all. Nobody was trying to disband a group. Nobody was trying to take any money away because we didn't authorize any money. So as with any issue, you get some people who like to rile everybody else up. And then they leave while everybody's riled up. So hopefully this will give cooler heads a chance to prevail and we'll come back again.
Well, and, and the request was made to the county without, if they had just taken it out of that, I mean, if the, if the statement is we're not interested in dispatch and patrol, then you already made the request. So that request, I mean, it could have already been taken out. The question I'm wondering is why, why is it there? And why couldn't it have just been taken out? It doesn't make sense to me. And so maybe this was, it just looks like it was a hard thing to get the community upset, as the one person said. I mean, it's not healthy for a community to be upset, but really that's just what needs to come out of that contract. And it's already was asked and we were told no. So as a governing body, there are limitations to what we have the ability, how we process, what we do. And so the ask was appropriate. The no is a choice that another entity gets to make. But then this is the next step for us to, to make sure that, that that's what the request is. And if it's not being done in the first place, then taking it out of, out of the contract should be an easy thing to do, period. And hopefully in 30 days, that could happen. And then it's a, it's a resolved issue.
Madam Chair?
Move.
I don't want to extend a very lengthy meeting, but I, I do concur with what's, what's been stated. And I think what happened tonight was, in a way, healthy. I think this was a healthy demonstration of civic engagement, which is always what we want. Folks came out. Doesn't mean we have to agree with everything that everybody said, but they had, they took the opportunity to speak and be involved and be engaged. So there's that piece. I also believe that, a couple of things I want to say. We, yes, this was never about dismantling Supreme felons or anything like that. This, this was about two particular points that I'm not even quite sure that was understood by the large group of folks that were here. I don't know. Time will tell. It was never about that. But, you know, I think we can't be afraid of the word, you know, I, I had a good teacher once by, you know, a lady by the name of Congresswoman Debbie Dingell. And one of the things I learned by my time with her was that we can't be afraid of the word compromise. It's not a four-letter word. It's about us all coming together as one community and as one body and working out misunderstandings, disagreements, and working on something that we can all be happy and satisfied with in the end. So if we can get there, that would be a wonderful thing. And I will say, in addition to that, it was, I'm sorry it took this event to bring out folks from the county. I'm sorry that it took something of this magnitude and size and drama for them to come out. Because had we had these conversations in our meeting room, when we've requested, we may have been able to avoid a good amount of this tonight. So I don't think that, that point should go unspoken and that shouldn't be missed. Because we have definitely reached out to generate that conversation. So, and, and last thing I'll say, and, and for tonight, last thing I'll say for tonight, so we can all get going wherever we got to be. But I think that Mr. Winters is a, been a good steward of our community. I think he's always looked out for the best interests of our community. And not only that, I think he's been an encouraging colleague to me personally. So any innuendo or accusation of his character in terms of how he views people, I am personally defensive of because he's been nothing less than a consummate professional and decent person to me. So I just had to have that, you know, I wanted to be sure that was said.
Agreed. And I think it was compounded because the packet wasn't uploaded. No, I mean, I think, no, I do think that compounded it because there wasn't, they couldn't read the resolution. They didn't know it was about dispatch and patrol, you know, they didn't know that. So that was probably helped add to a lot of the issues. So we're going to get that fixed, right?
Yes. For now, the packet is uploaded to a third-party site so that it's like a, it's like a workaround. So like you can go to download the packet and it will reroute you to another link that you can actually download the packet out. We will like pay for the downloads, but it's worth it to have that. And trust me, we went through many links Friday and today to try and make it happen.
Make it happen.
Work that out with IT. So.
All right. Motion to adjourn is in order.
Yeah, I just have one more thing to say. Just real brief, because I know everybody wants to go. I think social media played an important part in gathering people that were mistaken with the facts. Meaning that it's just like with men like us, they brought all of the, the people, but they weren't even on the agenda. And it just, it just roused up a whole bunch of unnecessary, well, dialogue that wasn't, that nothing could have been done today. It could have been saved for another day. I just think that, you know, that's where social media, because it was on Facebook, you know, how the township is trying to close down men like us or keep it closed. And, you know, people see that and that's what brought all the people out. I just think that, you know, social media played a big part of that.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 10:23.